Twenty twenty-three meeting. I will ask the city clerk to establish a quorum and do a roll call.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Landrum?
Here.
Councilmember Ford?
Here.
And Mayor Wixom?
Here. With that, before we take a moment of silence, I'd like to just do a real quick recognition for a Morro Bay resident and good friend who passed away three weeks ago, Steve Carnes. Steve, along with Ron McIntosh and Dave Tope, started the Morro Bay Car Show, Cruising Morro Bay Car Show, in 1997. He is a member of the Coast Guard, and he served as Planning Commissioner here. So he gave a lot to this community. There'll be a memorial service held on November 3rd at 2:00 PM at the Vets Hall here for any of those who would like to attend. And with that, we'll take a moment of silence. Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Barton, can you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Newmeyer, closed session report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. At the request of council, I've been asked to report tonight that on item CS1, there's anticipated there'll be a public agenda item in the future for State Park Marina, and that for CS4, depending upon pending negotiations, there may be a public agenda item. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Newmeyer. And with that, we will go to Mayor and Councilmember Reports, Announcements, and Presentations. And I will start down with Councilmember Ford.
I'll keep it really short. First of all, I want to welcome everyone here. It was a great turnout. It's great to see the place filled. And so, thank you. If this is your first time being here, welcome. It's great to have, you know, our community come out and to engage in what's happening in Morro Bay. And so, I want to quickly let you know that myself and Councilmember Barton visited the Forty Prado Homeless Center. We also attended with a few other staff members, and it was just a really eye-opening experience. I am so glad that we had a chance to see what goes on there. You know, I know that we utilize that center as a county shelter, essentially. We use their services, but it was really great to actually see, hear what they do from the moment a person arrives to what their hopeful destination might be. Also got to, you know, walk the grounds. It was just really interesting to hear about the different programs that they have. They even have something called dine and dash, where people do not actually stay the night there. They just come and they get a meal. It's a, they offer a lot to our whole community. And I don't know if Councilmember Barton wants to add anything during her announcements to that, but I'm just thankful that Capslo gave us the opportunity to take that tour. And that's it for today. Thank you.
I'd like to welcome everyone this evening as well. Usually, I give a pretty short and sweet report, but I do have a little bit lengthy one tonight, so bear with me. I wanted to first start off with if you were able to or not able to make it to Toons and Tidlins. If you were, I hope you had a great time, like I did. It was absolutely incredible how many people were out there. It was perfect weather. The music was phenomenal. I love seeing people walk around with pile-high nachos. And so, I highly recommend that you get out there this Thursday, September 14th. It's from 5:00 to 7:00, and enjoy the music and friends and family. It's a great time. I actually get to do a Vistra report tonight, so I wanted to take this opportunity because we haven't had much dialogue with the company. And for some reason, I think it's probably to, I would like to say the Mayor, my credit, and staff, that we've been pushing. We've been pushing for more information. And as of last week, the Mayor and myself have had little contact with representatives from Vistra, but not with lack, without the lack of pushing. Oftentimes, I'm learning in this position that it's asking the right questions and that's going to get you where to go. And during our second Vistra Subcommittee meeting that we had a week and a half ago, it came forward that representatives from council, as well as the city manager, were welcome to attend ongoing meetings between Vistra's attorneys and our attorneys. These meetings have been mainly for the purpose of discussing the CEQA and the EIR report between the city and the applicant, Vistra. We took the opportunity during this meeting that we attended 11:30 on this last Thursday, we took the opportunity to ask for further information, asking questions regarding everything from safety, safety standards, economic analysis, timeline, et cetera. Some information, as you can imagine, was provided for us, and I did get some of my questions answered, while others, you know, they would need to consult their client. The information we received will be a part of, more than likely, the joint Planning Commission and Council meeting on September 26th. So there'll be more to come, I'm sure, on that. Yesterday, we also had the opportunity, the Mayor, myself, city manager, Kimball, and Chief McCrayne, to actually take a drive up to Moss Landing to visit the site. We were met by David Jaeger, the Director of Project Development for Vistra. During this visit, we got a thorough education on the batteries themselves, the mechanisms, how they work, the racks, the encasements, and the protocols, as well as a step-by-step kind of report on what exactly happened during their two very public incidences.
Can you copy this report?
All of this while walking on a site, which, in my opinion, I would describe as an industrial, like, energy storage revolution site unto itself, like, evolution. Each phase at this site, interestingly enough, the first phase was taking and repurposing a building and then kind of configuring the modules and the racks themselves within the confines of that, including all the piping, the sprinkler systems, et cetera. And we were talked through that, and where one of the incidents had occurred. And then, the second site, Phase 2, was yet another evolution form of it, still the batteries and case, batteries and racks themselves, the same, but yet this one was in a large structure, building, structure that was new and not a repurposed one. So similar, but wider spaces between the modules themselves and the racks themselves, so quite a bit of difference in seeing the apparatuses within that particular building. And lastly, we found ourselves at Phase 3, which was apparently just completed in June. And these were what I would call containers, where the racks and modules with the batteries inside them were within large containers that were set up on pilings and then spaced out over about 14 acres. So all in all, we were able to, you know, learn about three different types of enclosures, if you will, all utilizing the same batteries, protocols, and systems. So that is my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Landrum?
Well, I wasn't real, I didn't have too much to report on my meeting today. I met with two of the wind farm companies, Golden State Winds and Equinor. And they wanted, I do want to say, they wanted everyone to know that the wind farm endeavor does not require battery storage. So since there, I know there's so many of you here that are interested in that, I just wanted to let you know that. And otherwise, they didn't really have too many solid details to offer, other than they really want to work with the city of Morro Bay, and they are still interested in our city as a O and M port, as well as they want to work with the fishermen here, too. Other than that, I, it was a really busy weekend, this weekend. There was a lot going on. There was a water polo tournament, and I think a track tournament at the high school, and Cal Poly has a lot going on right now with students moving in. And the intersection of 41 and Main Street has, was extremely impacted. And I'm here to report, it took me 96 seconds to get through that intersection.
Councilmember Barton?
Well, let's see, I'm going to pick up here about the Toons and Tidlins. I stopped in there also, and what a delightful experience. People were so happy coming out of there. It just, it was quite, quite busy, and I think it's been a real success for our Recreation and Parks Department. Like Councilmember Ford mentioned, Forty Prado, I was really struck by the silence in there. I guess I had assumed that with that many people moving around, that it would be much noisier and maybe disruptive, and it wasn't like that at all. The staff there is, they are really respectful of the clients, and the clients take that in and know that, and it's just a whole different place than I might have imagined. One of the things we toured was the kitchen there, and the kitchen is a, it's all steel, and they are able to work with, they get lots and lots of donated food, and so every day that makes you have to think of a different meal that you're going to be serving. And those meals are for eating in or eating out, as Jen mentioned. And it was just quite an eye-opener, what had been donated that day and what they were going to be making out of it. It was, it was very interesting. We were also accompanied by Lauren Leitinger, who lives here in Morro Bay, so some of you may know her. She was one of the people giving us a tour there, and it really, it really was a nice connection to have her there. Let's see. So that's, that's it. I'll stop there.
Thank you. I'll make mine quick. As Councilmember Edward said, we just visited the Vistra site at Moss Landing yesterday. We also, the last week, had a street safety workshop that many of us attended, and a visit to Franklin Riley Park. And there's a gathering that was held there, and discussion of collaboration with the city, the homeowners, and the Historical Society to do some modern, or minor, excuse me, renovations there. I would remind everyone that our next regularly scheduled meeting in two weeks on the 26th, as was shared earlier, is a joint Planning Commission-City Council meeting. We'll have five items that will be going over, and much of that will be informational. We will have an update and report from our staff regarding the BES, the Battery Storage Project, and also offshore wind. So with that, I will turn it over to our city manager.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I really don't have anything to add, but I would like to give my time to the Public Works, Public Works Director, to give a little bit of details on the two public meetings that was held last week.
Thank you, City Manager Kimball. And I'll be very short. The Mayor already discussed both public meetings, so we just wanted to thank everyone that came out for the Franklin Riley meeting. The city really appreciates the support of the Morro Bay Historical Society, as well as the Morro Cove Homeowners Association. Anyone who has input on the proposed plan for Franklin Riley Park can certainly reach out to the Public Works Department about that, or to the Historical Society. We are seeking input. The city received a grant last year for some very minor improvements to that open space area there. And then, we did have our first kickoff local road safety plan meeting here in Vets Hall last week. The city received good input. There were some, there was some feedback that was given to the city about the presentation, so we took that in, and we'll be making changes for the next two presentations. The next presentation will be at the October 18th meeting of the Public Works Advisory Board here in this room at 5:30, again, Wednesday, October 18th at 5:30. And then, there will be another stakeholder community meeting, date to be determined. But if you're signed up for automatic notifications on our website, you'll hear of it. They'll also be on the front of our webpage as well. I would like to note, however, that if you're unable to get to any of the local roadway safety plan meetings, you can go onto our website. There's an online tool. As soon as you go onto our webpage, you click on the little cartoon roadway, and you can put any concerns, areas of concern, or opportunity for increased or enhanced roadway safety onto a map. So you can click on any area of the map, anywhere in the city, state what your concern is. There's different icons you can use, if it's a cycling concern, ADA, pedestrian concern. All of that input will be taken in. Eventually, what we'll have is some projects developed in this local roadway safety plan, and that will make us eligible for Caltrans grants in the future. So please do take the time to share your input online. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Qualick, and City Manager Kimball. With that, I'm going to do a proclamation this evening, and this is going to be to recognize the 65th anniversary of the Astero Bay United Methodist Church here in Morro Bay, whereas the Astero Bay United Methodist Church traces its origin to a worship service of July 1957, conducted by Reverend Ogspie, I hope, in the building of the International Order of Odd Fellows at Harbor Street and Piney Way, whereas the church was founded April 27, 1958, and the subsequent growth of the church led to the purchase of six acres of a dairy farm in northeast Morro Bay for $12,000. And whereas Reverend Benjamin Torres, Jr., and successive pastors, the church was able to construct its present building on the site of 3,000 Hemlock Avenue. Whereas Reverend Rex Britt, as pastor, a new building was built September 23, 1962. And whereas in the years during Reverend Steve Islanders' pastorial, the church expanded its commitment to serve the Morro Bay community with the installment of an eight-sided peace pole, and through programs for families at the preschool and after-school children, and a community garden. And whereas in 2008, the congregation welcomed its first female pastor, Reverend Paula, who guided us to become a reconciled United Methodist Church, and whereas during COVID years, the church continued to focus on its ministries, serving our community, and increasing our discipleship in the community in new ways by using Zoom as a tool to broadcast Sunday worship service. Whereas for the six and one-half decades, the church has strived to maintain traditions of the past while continuing its role in ministry throughout the Astero Bay area. And now, therefore be it resolved, that the city council and the city of Morro Bay does hereby recognize its important contributions to our community, and congratulates the Astero Bay United Methodist Church on its 65th anniversary. Do we have a representative from the church here this evening? Thank you. And if you'd like a few minutes to speak, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Yes, please.
I'd like to just say really quickly that I worked for UMCC, the preschool, for over 10 years, and I just, it was one of the best experiences I've ever had, and I just want to congratulate you on this milestone, and it's just such a joyful time. So congratulations.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'm pretty good. With that, we will move on to public comment. I have speaker slips. After I go through the speaker slips, you're welcome, anyone, to take the mic. The first two speakers I have are going to be Larry Nuland and Scott Mayther.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers. I am Larry Nuland. I know a lot of you. I was a longtime board member at the Maritime Museum. I'm no longer on the board, but about a year ago, they asked me to be the project manager and liaison with the San Diego Maritime Museum to bring the San Salvador Galleon back to Morro Bay. And as you probably know by now, it was a resounding success in terms of visitation. So we did it, and that's in part thanks to the cooperation, collaboration with the city staff and the business community, especially, my hat's off to the harbor staff. But everybody kind of came together, was kind of a team effort. And to put it in some perspective, historically, we had the Endeavor here from Australia, much bigger vessel. In 1999, we had maybe 9,200 people go through her. And in 2016, the San Salvador came, and it was around 10,000. This time, I think it was about 10,300 or 400. So we exceeded our own expectations. It was a resounding success. And if there's one thing I hope that everybody would walk away from this experience with, is the idea that historic amenities and cultural amenities in a community sort of helped capture the soul of a place, the compelling sense of place of a small town like Morro Bay, which is kind of a maritime village. And so, there's kind of no downside to these things, and I know you folks are in the midst of considering a new property arrangement for the museum. I'm not really a party to that, but I hope you consider it an investment in that, in that future endeavor of capturing the soul of this place, because there's really no downside to a museum. It's a pretty good business, and it's pretty good for everybody. So thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Hello, Honorable Mayor and City Councilpeople. My name is Scott Mayther, past president of the Morro Bay Maritime Museum, and currently on the board still. And I was going to speak in regard to, on your consent agenda A3 there regarding a lease for us. We hope you see what we've been accomplishing recently. If you've noticed, we've completed, did, finished a complete restoration of the U.S. Navy DSRV submarine Avalon, which looks fantastic. It's an eye-popper when you come down the Embarcadero. And so, we hope you look favorably on our lease. And with your support, we're able to, to be true to our mission statement by providing a free educational venue for our visitors and locals alike. And, you know, I think, I think it's very important, Larry referred to it as a, you know, it's a, it comes right to the character of our town. And we're trying to preserve that history and share that history, which I feel is very important. So, and with your support, it allows us to do more and exciting things. You know, Larry mentioned the San Salvador. Last Sunday, we had a collaboration with four other museums throughout the county and put on a commemorative ceremony for the Honda Point, the 100th year anniversary of the Honda Point Naval Tragedy that occurred down in the Vandenberg area. It was well-received. We had Vice Admiral William Bowles did opening statements. We had U.S. Coast Guard Station Morro Bay do color guard. Lieutenant Commander, retired Eric Bruen from Camp San Luis participate. So it was between the Morro Bay Maritime Museum, the San Lu, excuse me, the Central Coast Veterans Memorial Museum there on Grand Avenue, they spoke, the Australia Warbirds, and Camp San Luis Museum. So it was a collaboration of bringing in the, a lot of the county and a lot of knowledge about it, and it was a very, it was very special to me. So with your support, we can continue to do that and do more and exciting things. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up is Judy Salamaka, followed by Gail Johnson.
Good evening, Council. It's my duty, I'm with the, I'm Judy Salamaka, with the resident of Morro Bay and a, on the Board of Directors for the Maritime Museum. And I wanted to say that, that museums do some wonderful things, but we also have some fun, too. And a couple of things coming up after the San Salvador, which was lots of fun, is the Maritime Family Fun Day, and that is a true collaboration of our entire community that step up and provide things for, for family fun type of things that are happening. I wanted to give you a preview of a radio spot that is going to be coming out next week. It's, and I hope I can do justice to it, it's Morro Bay's Second Annual Maritime Family Fun Day, Saturday, October 14th, right after Rotary's Ducky Derby on the bay at 8:30 AM. Then free fun all day, all, from 10 to 4. Come Get Salty, celebrating Morro Bay's charming waterfront and proud fishing industry, and some old-fashioned carnival-style fun for the entire family. Help build a sandcastle. Take your photo in a dive suit, pet a fish, toss a furry fish for trinkets through a shark's mouth. There's sea shanty music, paper sailboat crafting and competition, a weather balloon launch at noon, and sea creature sugar cookies with a free lunch hosted by Tognizini's Dockside. And cast your vote for the best chowder and blueberry muffin in town. All-day music provided by Ray Reardon's Savory Palette Players. It's fun, food, and Come Get Salty. There's a little bit more to that, but I'll stop there. You get the point. It'll be lots of fun. And it was fun last year. It's the second annual. We also have a party called Rock the Waterfront that is coming up on October 11th, and it's a celebration, a collaboration with the Morro Bay Yacht Club. So everything's on our website. You can get more information about both of those events at morrobaymaritime.org. But I'm here also to thank the city, to thank the Planning Department, and also announce that when the San Salvador came, they came, they said they came because we asked them to come. We asked them to come because they helped us in 2016 build the building that is there debt-free. They answered our call. We did amazingly well. We all know that. And tonight, I want to particularly thank our, our past president, Scott Mayther, you just met, and, or no, and Planning Director, Scott Graham, and also our consultant, Kathy Novak, for doing the heavy lifting on the lease. Thank you very much.
Honorable Mayor and Council and staff, I have a change of subject here, although I am a big fan of the Maritime Museum. My name is Gail Johnson. I live and vote in Morro Bay. Yesterday, on September 11th, a request for proposals was posted on the city website under the letterhead of Fire Chief McCrayne for best facility safety consulting services. The deadline to submit said proposals is October 10th, 2023, 29 days from the day of the posting. The timeline begs too many questions to address here, however. I am curious how it happens that the city has requested bids for a project that has not been approved, that is not legal in the location proposed, and that has a pending citizens initiative opposing it. I'm retired, and I retired in May. Before then, I didn't have time to monitor the shenanigans of the city, but I do now. Thank you.
So if I can ask you all, please, please, to choose to wave tonight rather than clap. We have so many speaker slips and a huge agenda, it would really be appreciated. Thank you. Next up is Gary Johnson, followed by Jude Long.
Okay. My name is Gary Johnson. I'm the Director on the Board of Directors for the Maritime Museum, and that's my subject tonight. Wow, did we have a good time or not? That was such a great event, bringing the San Salvador Galleon to the Port of Morro Bay, put on by the Maritime Museum and the Maritime Museum of San Diego. And I want to thank Larry, because Larry was the most responsible. because Larry was the most responsible person for bringing this up here. My hands to Larry. I've been working him since the 90s, trying to bring the museum here to Morro Bay. It was fantastic. I also want to mention the Salinian Tribe. They joined us in showing the Indian heritage who lived in this area for 10,000 years. They had kids painting rocks. They had, it was just fantastic. Finally, the attendance, like Gary said, Larry, were 10,000 people, visitors. And guess what, folks, as just mentioned by Judy, we have two more fantastic Morro Bay Maritime events in October. This is a in-house city, in-house event. The first one will be October 11th. There will be an annual Morro Bay Maritime Museum fundraiser called The Rock on the Front, to be held at the Morro Bay Yacht Club. What a nice place. Located on the south end of the Embarcadero. Heavy hors d'oeuvres, entertainment. Oh, it's going to be so great. This could be better than last year. And then we have Enjoying the Music by the Riptide. Lastly, October 14th will be our Second Annual Family Days, as Judy mentioned, located in Embarcadero. There will be something for everybody. And mainly, I want to mention that the Native Americans are with a more like to be called Indian Tribe, the Salinian Indian Tribe. And they're going to be here just like last year. They'll put on events for, for the Family Days and expect the routine from last year. And please, event, this is very important. A Morro Bay event by residents are welcome, and so are the visitors are welcome that come here. This event is for no alcohol, no smoking. Please don't wear any political wear. We're going to keep it clean. Last year, I couldn't believe how, how great it was. And please, when you come to visit the, oh, I'm almost out of time. When you come to visit to, to buy tickets, don't forget shopping is coming around the corner. Christmas, we got books and everything there. Buy t-shirts, coffee cups, you name it. So, when you come in there, buy your Christmas present. Thank you.
That's a hard act to follow. Hi, everyone. September is Library Card Sign-Up Month. And the Morro Bay Friends of the Library have an event coming up to let you know all about the free services. Now, I'm not talking about books, DVDs, things that you can see on the shelves. I'm talking about everything else but what's on the shelf. And there is so much, more than you can imagine. You can check out a sewing machine. You can use Makerspace. You can, we have passport services, DMV, driving tests, citizenship classes, and everything from online auto repair guides, Consumer Reports, genealogy sites, and Medline Plus. You can try online streaming of movies and music for all ages. Everything's free. Read online newspapers, and even have eBooks and audiobooks delivered to your phone or your computer. You have access with your library card to Hoopla, Overdrive, Libby, Cloud Library, Canopy, The Shelf, and many more. And for kids and teens, homework help. We offer free access to multiple sites that includes tutoring. See the Seed Library and learn about programs for all ages happening in it at your library. So, please stop by Saturday, September 23rd, 10 to noon. All ages are welcome. Enjoy refreshments, browse the tables, and we'll try to answer all of your questions and get you plugged into everything free that we have. I have another hat to wear, and I forgot to introduce myself. As Jude Long, I live in Los Osos, and I'm proud to say Morro Bay is my community. My other hat is Morro Bay Rotary. We have our Third Annual Morro Bay Rotary Ducky Derby fundraiser coming up Saturday, October 14th. Duckies are available. You can sponsor them for $10 each by going to morrobayrotary.org. Each ducky will have a unique number that I have personally inscribed on the bottom. And our prizes this year, $1,000 for first, $750 second, $500 for third. It starts at 8:00 a.m., again, on Saturday, October 14th, at the Gally Hoffbrow Parking Inlet, and it ends at Tidlands Park. We have Ducky Wranglers. The Central Coast Survivors will have their dragon boat in the bay, wrangling with numerous kayakers, paddleboarders, and of course, the Harbor Patrol boat. The winner will be announced promptly at 10:30 at the Family Fun Day at the Maritime Museum. So, we're starting out before they open. They open 10 to 4. All the money comes back to the community. So, thank you very much. I have flyers at the back table.
Thank you. Next up is Val Seymour, followed by Greg Kronk.
Good evening, City Council, City Manager, and staff. You're all over the place. I'm here to talk about the 10-year lease of the Maritime Museum. I don't really understand why you would have a lease when they don't pay any rent. What is the purpose of the lease? I was hoping some of those people that were up here ahead of me would clue into that. But hopefully, someone will be able to tell me. So, so why do they need a lease? The only thing I'm assuming is that they can do what they want and keep adding to their space with a lease, some kind of like a guarantee thing. I don't know. But anyway, what I wanted to bring up is that they did do a great job with the San Salvador. Loved all that. And, and I like the events that have been going on in the city. It's great. But where I am is on Front Street, and I see everything that goes on there. I see the cars that are lined up from the rock all the way to the freeway, and it takes them like an hour and a half to get to the freeway. I see the events going on at Gio with the, Gio's, Giovanni's with the white tents and everything. And where do those guys park, you know? And where do all the people park that were looking at the San Salvador? So, I'm not criticizing anybody's events. I, you know, it brings people, and people are happy, except they can't find a parking place. I was on the parking committee, and I really think that needs to happen again. We've got to push hard for more parking in this town, especially on the Embarcadero. I see them driving around looking every weekend. They can't find a space, and then they go park up in the town somewhere. So, you know, come on. It's about hospitality. These people, a lot of these people are paying to stay here. They're paying the city 14 and 1/2 percent, and they're paying the hotels, and we're providing the hospitality. But is the city providing it? Where are those taxes going? They need more parking. We got to do it. So, the place that is the most logical to me is where the Marine Museum is. You can leave that alone, but take those boats out of the other half and put a parking structure in there. That is what, it's going to solve the problem for everybody. You know, we have a lot of businesses. We have a lot of people who visit the town. It's great, but you need a big place to park. It's just, it's just not right the way, the way it is. So, I, I say reactivate the parking committee. Do not hire that company anymore to assess the problems. You paid them a lot of money, twice. Ridiculous. And the triangle lot, you put a structure in there, it's not blocking the view for anybody, you know? Okay. Anyway, that's what I'm suggesting we do. Thank you.
Well, I've noticed right off the bat that in order to shorten this presentation, we shortened a couple of pages that I really didn't want anyway. So, we'll do our best. So, my name is Greg Kronk, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm here twofold. One issue has been somewhat abated. We got, I got, and code enforcement letters pertaining to boulders on the corner lot that we occupy within the right-of-way. And then we were also given a code enforcement notice pertaining to a side lot fence that is six foot tall. Brought to our attention, even though we've owned the, my parents bought the property brand-new, or the house brand-new, in December of 1988, and it had a six-foot fence installed around it. But North Morro Bay District has a restriction on fence heights. So, we are in conflict with that, with that arrangement. So, why I'm here tonight is to talk about the fence particularly. I've got a letter that says the issue regarding right-of-way, which I'm assuming is the boulders, has been, let's say, abated for, for right now. Doesn't say if it's permanent or discussed at a later date. So, I can go through and the slides that are, that they're showing here. The first couple of slides were only narratives that have gone back, letters and such. My efforts to explain why I think for matters of safety, the six-foot fence offers a much more secure environment. And what the city ordinance cites is safety, airflow, and, and light for considerations. Those are the only three factors that are to be determination of that fence height. But nobody can tell me, does the light level change as the arc of the sun goes by? To what level? That's not happening. That Mother Nature pretty much controls that. And I, I personally went and bought an anemometer, checked both sides of the fence to know what the airflow is. And there is no measurable difference between the two. Lastly, the fence height between a rear fence between adjoining neighbors and a side fence between adjoining neighbors is still allowed to be six foot six. So, if that fence can be six foot six inches tall, but only the side lot of the side street can be four foot or five foot, again, that doesn't make sense. And what the slides are showing here, the reason we put boulders to begin with is once smaller, more compact cars came to prevalence, people would park diagonally instead of parallel. They'd get out of their car. There was an incline. They wouldn't set a parking brake, and it would hit the fence. So, I had a six-foot level. So, if this is plumb, vertical, the worst-case scenario was that fence was pushed seven inches out. So, it's, that's the reason of all the information that I provided. And I, if I could take a second, long, Mr. Neflor is with the code enforcement, who's one of the code enforcement officers. And your city clerk have been very, very helpful in trying to get this information to you. So, for that, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Linda Winters, followed by Doug Rogers.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, staff, and the chiefs. I am Linda Winters, living in the same mobile home park on Main Street for the past 29 and 3/4 years. I'm a little bit tired tonight after working for the Monday Night Community Dinner, right here, where 68 folks walked through these doors, shopped for clothing, and the food bank, and ate a wonderful meal prepared by the United Methodist Church, and they all left. I was, just after they were honored, I was a little bit disappointed. I wanted to give them another round of applause. After I got home, I ate my dinner finally, and I watched a PBS special about the 22nd anniversary, a commemoration of 9/11. It was very heartfelt. And I want to thank all of the police and the fire department for helping. Okay, I wasn't going to do that. Now, back to my forever purpose, speaking for Mobile Home Park residents here in Morro Bay. And now, in Los Osos and Cayucas, the Ombudsman Group I've been associated with since 2000 appointed me as GSMOL Regional Associate Manager. Quite a title. GSMOL stands for Golden State Manufacturing Homeowners League. And they had a conference down in San Maria this past Saturday with their state attorney, representative from HCD, Housing and Community Development, and also legislators, members Monique Limone and Greg Hart. They call themselves a part of the Central Coast Caucus, and our own Dawn Addis is also a member. She has sponsored a bill that is now before the legislature in regards to helping to protect the people that live in mobile home parks forever and ever. And I so appreciate it. I have a very special note to Ms. Campbell and Mr. Newmeyer. The GSMOL have offered to come and speak to any of our residents about what their rights are, and I am so thrilled to have that happen. I thank you very much, and I'll see you on the 26th.
Hello, Mayor, City Council staff. My name is Doug Rogers. I'm a member. I live in Morro Bay. And I just want to speak on item C1 briefly. I can't stay. But I really encourage the staff report. I'm very interested in knowing what the impacts may be of the citizens' initiative. I'm studying it quite a bit. And I encourage you to request the city staff report. Thank you.
Next up is Aaron Oaks, followed by Mary Angustson.
Good evening, members of the Council and staff. My name is Aaron Oaks of Morro Bay. I just wanted to touch briefly on this wonderful crowd behind me. Look at all the people wearing the blue shirts tonight. I'm going to take a second just to look around. These people successfully got enough signatures for the initiative to qualify on an upcoming ballot. Why is that? Is because Morro Bay doesn't want a ticking lithium ion, ion time bomb. They don't want that in their community. And there are some people who do want it in our community, but they couch it in a lot of talking points that we've seen going back and forth through the press. And one of the, the opponents of the initiative talk about something called Assembly Bill 2005. And they say, well, if there's a successful initiative, then Vistra can challenge it and go to the California Energy Commission to essentially overrule the, the, the initiative, or the will of the initiative, to push the project through. Well, I have some news for those people who keep saying that. Well, Assembly 205 essentially lets Vistra do that even if the city council votes 3 to 2 to deny the project. According to the Legislative Analyst's Office, who I just got an email from, Vistra does have a pathway to do that, even if we go through the public process, as we should go through the public process. You know, I'm not saying we shouldn't. But even when we go through the public process and the city council votes their conscience of 3 to 2 to deny the project, Vistra can still lobby the California Energy Commission and the state to push the project through. And given the way they've conducted themselves here in the community, threatening residents with lawsuits for speaking their minds and expressing concerns about the project, they're acting in bad faith. And so are the opponents to the initiative. And, and I say that because I reached out to, to opponents of the initiative on the Community Task Force, which I talked about at the previous city council meeting, because I want both sides to come together and have an understanding that we need to move past BES and talk about what kind of projects and what kind of developments that we can have in that space. But I haven't heard back from them. And that's unfair. But I haven't heard back from them, and that's unfortunate. So I just want to congratulate the organization, the Citizens for Estero Bay Preservation, for coming up with this initiative, going door-to-door, speaking to residents in the community, and getting a very strong consensus. And so I have a message to the city council. I said, when the project comes before you, deny the project. And my message to Vistra is very simple: Withdraw your application, or we're coming for you. Thank you.
No clapping, just wave. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. We all do. Next up is Ray Reardon, followed by Sherry Hafer.
Hi, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I am so sorry. Sorry, Mary Ann.
Hi. Thank you, Ms. Mayor, City Council staff. My name is Mary Ann Gustafson. I live here in Morro Bay. I'm also the president of the San Luis Obispo Bike Club. We have 600 members throughout San Luis Obispo County, and we are going to be hosting the 52nd Annual Lighthouse Century Bicycling Event. It's going to be Saturday, September 23rd, from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. It's being headquartered at Morro Bay High School. And riders essentially will be riding north on Highway 1 through Cayucus, Cambria, San Simeon, some will be going past the Piedras Blancas Lighthouse, and then they return and come back. We have routes between 64 and 100 miles, and because it's a long Highway 1, if someone feels they don't want to go that long, they can always just turn around and come back. We're expecting about 1,000 riders. So we're gonna have a number of folks here. Anyways, no roads will be closed. We're, it's hosted by, not only the San Luis Obispo Bike Club, but we also have volunteers from local bike shops, we have ham radio clubs helping us, BikeSlowCounty and other volunteer organizations. And the post-event meal and activities will be at Morro Bay High School also. We are expecting that the event's going to sell out. So we are gonna have three CHP units that will be patrolling the routes to monitor both auto and rider behavior. The Morro Bay Police Volunteers will be helping to direct traffic at the high school at the start of the event. We're having SAG vehicles that are gonna be driving up and down Highway 1 to make sure that they can assist riders, and also if someone decides they are done for the day, they can transport them back to Morro Bay High School. We're gonna have bike mechanics at all rest stops, and we're gonna have ham operators also to be in contact with the SAGs. The average, oh, let's look here. Anyways, in 2022, last year when we did this, 64% of riders stayed in Morro Bay for an average of about two nights. So that's about 600 riders and their families here in our city, staying in hotels, eating in restaurants, going to our shops. The money we raised from this event helps to support BikeSlowCounty. We also make donations to the high school and to the volunteer police department, the sheriff's department, their Christmas children's bike giveaway, Cal Poly Cycling, the Cal Poly Amateur Radio Club, and Estero Radio Club. Of the riders last year, about 40% are new to the event and new to Morro Bay, and 87% of them from last year would recommend our event to a friend. So it's a very popular event, and it's, I think, a good part of it, although I am a Morro Bay resident, is because we have a great town. So people are really excited to come here. Riding along Highway 1 is gorgeous. They get to see zebras, they get to see elephant seals, and a lot of smiling faces from all the volunteers and the folks in our community. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mary Ann. My apologies. So next up is Ray and Sherry. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, esteemed council and staff. I'm Ray Reardon. I am the board chair of the Chamber of Commerce, and it was kind of fun today, okay? Heard about Forti Prado. I was a former director of marketing for Forti Prado, so right on for them. And then Judy gave me a little bit of kudos on the Maritime Museum, because I do the music there with my little group from Savory Pallett, so thank you, Judy. And I came here only to invite you all to the shop sip and stroll on Thursday. I knew Barry was having this big crowd here, and I figured this was the best marketing I could do to get you all out on the embark and arrow. Sorry about the parking, okay? But we have 16 different spots that will be serving food and beverage. It's all about the local community. That is what the chamber is. And I just wanted to thank you all for being here. It's kind of cool to see democracy in action, so you're good. All right? Thank you very much.
Mine isn't as fun and upbeat as everybody else's, so sorry to bring everybody down. But I'm Sherry Hafer. I am a wife of a Morro Bay commercial fisherman for 37 years. I'm the secretary of the Central Coast Women for Fisheries and the Morro Bay Lease Area Mutual Benefit Corporation, or MBC. I'm here to request the City of Morro Bay to sign a resolution supporting the encouragement of the three Morro Bay wind developers to join the MBC. I want to prefix these comments with the fact that we think offshore wind farms are a horrible idea, and we do not want them. I only have a few minutes, or I could go on forever, on the reasons why it is a bad idea. However, California's priorities are what they are, and again, the fishermen will likely get the short end of the stick. So we have worked hard to be prepared as much as possible for the inevitable. On August of 2016, Red Davis told the fishermen the city was considering leasing the intake tunnel to Castle Wind for their cables, but wanted to be sure there was a fisherman's agreement that the fishermen agreed would mitigate for the impacts of an offshore wind farm off our coast, which at the time was only 120 square miles. Now it's over 400. On November 29th, 2018, the City of Morro Bay Council passed a resolution to enter into a community benefits agreement with Castle Wind, which included an acknowledgement of the fishermen's agreement that was executed October 6, 2018. On November of 2022, Castle Wind and the fishermen's organizations advanced the provisions of the fishermen's agreement and established a legal entity, the Morro Bay Lease Area Mutual Benefits Corporation, or MBC. The fishermen's agreement took seven years, hundreds of thousands of meetings, and over $170,000 in legal fees to finalize. It was quite an accomplishment. It was amazing. My husband got all those fishermen degree on something. So it was all the Port San Luis guys, too. So the MBC was set up with a supervising board and a trustee committee with seven commercial fishermen, one commercial passenger fishing vessel rep, and three wind developer representatives, who will have the responsibility of managing the funds, communications, and other required responsibilities of both industries. It is an industry-to-industry agreement, separate from state and federal requirements, just like the fiber optic cable agreements. The MBC Community Benefit Fund will be used to promote the sustainability of the fishing community, similar to how the funds from the Central Coast Fisheries Cable Liaison Committee have utilized their mitigation funds for the past 20 years. For example, those funds were used for safety equipment that included radars, radios, pumps, eberbs, alarms, GPS, AIS, life wraps, ice machines, gear storage equipment, and so on, a lot more things. So because Castle Wind was not able to secure the lease, the fishermen have no mitigation in place. The state is requiring two years to come up with guidelines of mitigation, but they won't be done until 2026. The site surveys are scheduled to begin next year in May, so there will be no mitigation on the plate for the fishermen. The site surveys will require high-density sonic surveys of 195 to 203 decibels of pinging every 10 seconds for several weeks. The finfish max threshold is 120 decibels before hearing damage and other behavioral impacts occur. The ocean wind sonic-
Sherry, I need you to finish up, please.
Okay. So anyways, the bottom line is they're not cooperating with us at all, and we are just hoping that the city will work with us on signing a resolution, just encouraging them to support our MBC and work with us.
Thank you.
Okay, and I have a copy of the resolution we would like you to-
Thank you. Next up is Barbara Dorr, followed by Tom Hafer.
It's not, oh, the clock's not moving. I was waiting for it to start. Thank you. I provided you with a copy of BES, as was presented in a Vistra document, just for a reminder of what this is all about, and then the comments I have to make. And I just want to thank all those people who took the effort and went out and got the signatures and did what the initiative process allows in a community. And I hope tonight that you immediately put this to a vote of the people. I just want to point out that tonight's staff report does not recommend immediate placement of voters' successful and certified general plan initiative on the ballot, but instead, it merely presents three options for review and decision by your mayor and city council. In contrast, in April of 2022, the Certified Harbor Initiative for a parcel tax, the city staff report clearly recommended the mayor and city council call for a general municipal election. They didn't say go for a study. And I think we need the same treatment tonight. They voted, they signed the signatures, they presented it, it's been certified, put it on the ballot, give it to the voters. Nobody came out with a study asking the community if they could afford a parcel tax for the harbor. No studies were done, so you don't need to do that tonight. The 2022 recommendation is in the letter. Why didn't staff recommend immediate placement on the ballot for tonight's certified initiative, as they did in 2022 for the parcel tax? I think we should, and that's the process we should take. The voters are asking for it, they signed the initiative. There will be plenty of time to debate during the months preceding the election. Issues will be presented in ballot statements, impartial analysis, pros and cons, public debates, and the city council and American have their own sponsor illegal women voters forum on the initiative. Certainly, AB 205 or SB 205, which has been mentioned and discussed by Vistra, this can, this will be brought up, and whatever happens, it doesn't make any difference, as has been said earlier, it could still go to the state and they can make the decision. I'm all for sustainable energy. I'm all for having wind energy, having battery storage, that's the way we're going. We can have it in our homes. It's very important. But it doesn't belong in a beautiful coastal beach town. I've looked online for many best sites around the world in the U.S. They're never plunked right down on a beach. They're at outskirts. Thank you. Please vote tonight to put it on the ballot.
Here, here. Waving, waving. Thank you, waving.
Mayor, council members, staff, chiefs, city manager, I'm Tom Hafer. I'm a commercial fisherman here in Morro Bay. I'm also the president of the Morro Bay Fishing Organization. I think I've been president now for 10 years. I'm here to speak on A9 about the money that the Morro Bay Fishing Organization is donating to the city, the $100,000 to repair our slips. We all know the storm we had in January, the southerly we had, did a lot more damage to the slips. I mean, the slips were bad before that storm, but that storm made them really bad. And we appreciate the city getting $200,000, too, to help rebuild our docks. We're donating $100 from the fishing organization, which is coming from the cable, fiber optic cables. Our mitigation we get for the fiber optic cables being out here every year, we've got it over 23 years now, and it's really helped out the city in a lot of ways. So the fishermen are willing to add up that $100,000, help fix the docks, but we're really kind of hoping that we get some FEMA money down the line, and maybe the docks need to be rebuilt, because they all are falling apart. They're not safe. So, I mean, let's fix them up for now, you know, as much as we can, and make them safe, and hopefully down the line we'll get some more money from somewhere. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. With that, public comment is open. I have no more speaker slips.
My name is Betty Winholz, and I really am speaking to the audience behind me. It's with regard to the garbage increase that's been requested by our garbage company, and to remind people that they have the right to vote no on this increase, and that a no ballot can be turned in to City Hall before October or no later than October 10th, which is the hearing where that will be decided. And if half plus one of the residents in Morro Bay turn in a ballot, then we do not have an increase in our garbage rates. And so I would encourage everyone behind me to, and any of those in front of me that would want to turn in their ballot to do that. There is no yes ballot. It's only, it's, there is, it's an assumed yes unless you vote no. And so I encourage you to do that. Thank you.
Public comment is open to any of the speakers who come up.
Excuse me, I did submit a slip, but it must have been too late. My name is Melinda Elster, and I thank you, City Council, for this opportunity to come before you. I'm here as a longtime resident of Morro Bay. I live at 1176 Las Tunas Street, which is two blocks from the proposed project development at 1140 Alessandro Street. So I'm here as a neighbor. I walk through that neighborhood all the time, and I want to express my support for this development. It's going to really improve dramatically that block in the city. The lot next to this proposed development is a, should be condemned, broken-down, abandoned home. So anything that can improve that whole property and that lot area in that last part of town, I think is a wonderful opportunity to improve the neighborhood. So I would, I support the planning commission approval of the project and the planning department's denial of this appeal. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council, and Staff. My name is Terry Simons. Just trying to clarify how you're handling the meeting tonight. Is it your intention to address the consent agenda items individually or collectively? And if so, I'd like to reserve time on some of those. If not, I'll speak to them now.
Collectively.
Thank you.
I've been working on a film. It's a documentary about all the stuff happening. We're trying to aim for a Christmas release. We've been interviewing chemists, and the four things that they kind of told us was that if somehow, if there's less than perfection, whether it from negligence or even like an act of terror, we just want to protect like our community so much. We love it here, we want to have kids here, we want to like do things. It would be the equivalent of 15,000 simultaneous car fires, like a car battery fire that restarts itself every 2.5 hours. It creates a sticky air tar- It creates a sticky air tar so the firefighters can't do air support. The fire suit studies show they can't even clean this thing up to 40% with any detergent, even if they build the best thing. It creates a, not a chlorine mustard gas, but a different colored mustard gas like World War I and cyanide like World War II, and we're hyper concerned about this. Vistara is a company that I believe has basis in Texas and Germany. And we have a film coming out about how to save people. We're talking to Maui. We're talking to different people where tragedies are happening all the time. They just lost 99 and lost people. And we need more than 29 days for a fire study. And anyway, I worked on the Best Picture winner in 2021 with Meryl Streep. I've worked on Hawaii 5-0. I have a lot of background in this stuff. And we've teamed up with some really talented scientists and people that just want to save lives and protect our wonderful country. Our grandfather was the civil engineer, the sculptor that America chose after Oppenheimer to fix things. And so we have a wonderful film coming out this Christmas to try to save our community from this. And also personally, my old home was near a property with a density to chemicals. My property insurance went up from $216 a month to thousands and thousands. I personally lost millions of dollars over proximity and I live in Morro Cove. And we just want to save everything from people that are, you know, parenting age. So please help us. Thank you.
Good evening, Bill Martinie. And I think I saw on Closed Door where you were discussing the grammar school site. And I didn't know if, I think it's really an excellent idea if you're moving forward on, you know, working something out on that site. But I didn't know if the public or if it's available on, if you have an appraisal, approximately the cost on the site and potential uses for it. And if there's any information available at this time as far as, you know, the status on, you know, what's going forward on the school site. The other thing is I wanted to bring up, I know they talked earlier, someone talked on parking on the Embarcadero. And you also had the traffic safety that we attended about a week ago. And one thought is there's so much congestion on the Embarcadero and parking at the north end is so clogged up that for years they've been talking about doing the bridge across Morro Creek to alleviate the bulk of the, you know, traffic in that. Someone mentioned it was an hour and a half to get from the Embarcadero out. And I think it's probably time to start thinking about the second leg of the bridge. The first leg of the bridge, I think Jamie, his, you know, the council built it for about a million dollars. You could do the second leg of the bridge for maybe another million to alleviate the traffic. So between traffic calming, traffic safety, and maybe think in that direction as far as solving some of the parking issues on the Embarcadero and the traffic clogging. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Seeing that, I will close public, excuse me, AGP, do we have anyone in the queue?
Thank you, Mayor Wickson. We currently have two raised hands in the queue. One is a phone call ending in 239. Caller, I'm going to allow you to speak. Caller, are you there?
Yes, I am. Thank you for offering to speak at today's meeting. My name is Akash Patel. I'm a part of the ownership of multiple hotels in the city of Morro Bay. I'm speaking to you today in regards to the agenda item C2 for the repeal and replace of section 3.24.110 of chapter 3.24 of Morro Bay's municipal code. This change would effectively take control out of the city council's hand to hear appeals on TOT audits conducted on hotels in the city and give it to a third party that has no authority to fix the underlying concerns that even merited the appeal by the hotel operator in the first place. Our hotel in Morro Bay recently went through an audit and the findings were emailed and mailed out to us on July 26, 2023. When we contacted the city staff that we have issues with the findings that were made by the city's tax collecting agency, HDL Companies, the city staff informed us that we were not able to make an appeal and instead needed to wait for the final determination letter for us to file an appeal. And that final determination has purposely been delayed in order for the city staff to try and approve this revision to the tax code prior to us having an opportunity to bring this in front of our city council members. And this revision's sole purpose is to be punitive in nature and not aimed in good faith in trying to solve the main issues that merited an appeal by our hotel in the first place. All findings for TOT payment deficiencies found for our hotel were due to the vague definition of the term rent within the existing tax code. HDL Companies is attempting to insinuate that any revenue that occurs at the hotel must be taxed, including damages to the hotel by guests, smoking damages, pet damages, and even cancellation fees where the guest never stayed in the room within the city of Morro Bay, which goes against the full bearing of the current tax code. I asked city council members to reject C2 and inform city staff and the manager to define the meaning of rent within the existing tax code as every other city in California is starting to do, such as the cities of Modesto, San Diego, Los Angeles, Salinas, and Gilroy. Thank you for your time.
We now have Darshan Patel. I'm going to allow you to speak.
Thank you, Mayor and council members, for the opportunity to comment. My name is Darshan Patel, and I did email a letter earlier today with a more detailed explanation of our stance. As a local property owner directly affected by the proposed amendment, we also wanted to voice our concerns directly regarding ordinance 660, which contains various provisions for amendments and changes to the TOT appeals process. The proposed ordinance will create significant barriers for resolution and acts as a preventative method to avoid appeals regarding transient occupancy audits due to the exceptionally high appeal fee. The ordinance language directly indicates the appeal fee for filing an appeal based upon this chapter is the full amount, i.e. full cost recovery of the current fiscal year non-discounted fee provided for in the city's adopted fee schedule for appeals for non-land use administrative decisions. The current appeal fee for non-land use administrative decisions for the 2023-24 City of Morro Bay master fee schedule is $326. However, if the ordinance is approved as written, the fee specifically for operators' appeal in TOT audits will amount to $3,565. The significant fee is not only unjust, but deceptive considering the city is currently working on an audit, and this directly preempts those efforts by fundamentally altering the procedures. As city staff has been informed, the pending appeals are due to unclear and ambiguous language regarding transient occupancy tax collection. Rather than addressing the ongoing transient occupancy tax issues raised by multiple hotel motel owners and operators within Morro Bay, the amendment circumvents the core issue and does not address the root cause of the pending appeals. Surrounding cities in California have released clarifications for their TOT collection ordinances to remove the guesswork for operators. For the benefit of operators and the city of Morro Bay, the existing ordinance should be updated and clarifying materials be published to ensure compliance by all operators within Morro Bay. This will lead to less audit findings and ultimately reduce appeals. Otherwise, the same issues will continue to occur regardless of the proposed amendment and cause further burdens. Providing an independent hearing officer is a step in the right direction only if the unreasonable high fee is removed and the existing tax code language is clarified. To provide equitable access and opportunity for operators to voice their concerns, the appeal fee should be the same $326 for all non-land use administrative decisions. Otherwise, the existing appeal process should not be amended or changed. If the cost of the appeals is a true concern, it is vital to practically analyze the situation. For example, the audits only occur every three years and not all properties receive findings. Further, of the properties that do receive findings, even fewer decide to appeal the decision based on the nature of the findings. For an industry that generates upwards of $15 million in revenue for the city across those three years, there can be some deference in the event an operator decides to submit an appeal. Otherwise, the city of Morro Bay can create a line item fund from those same TOT revenues to support the cost of appeals. Thank you for your consideration, and we hope our experience as hospitality property owners in Morro Bay will be utilized to provide better direction for city policy. Thank you.
Thank you. AGP, anyone else?
We have one more raised hand. Shori, I'm going to allow you to speak now.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Thomas Shori. I'm an architect and a developer here in Morro Bay, and I wanted to raise a comment about the multifamily development on Alessandro. I'm actually in support of the project. I think it's going to be helpful for the neighborhood. And I wanted to add that I also live right across the street from the project. And I do have one kind of major concern that I just wanted to voice and hope that some type of ideas can be brought up to address it. The way the doors in the back of the project face the Marengo side is going to create an incentive for cars to park on Marengo, which is already incredibly narrow at that point. And I just really believe that you're going to see a flood of cars on Marengo as a result of this project that's going to destroy that street and cause that all of the residents on Marengo have cars in front of all of their houses. And I'm wondering if some type of just strategy to keep everybody parking down on Alessandro and not allowed to park on Marengo for that particular project. That's all.
AGP, anymore?
There are no more raised hands in the queue.
Thank you. With that, I will close public comment. Just a couple real quick notes. There was a question about parking. We tentatively have scheduled on September 26 the update for the paid parking program, so we will be talking about that. And also at our joint meeting with the planning commission, we will be doing an update on offshore wind. And there's probably an opportunity that information on community benefits agreements and what those look like will be included in that. A shout out and thank you to the Morro Bay Commercial Fishermen's Association for their support in the dock repairs. We appreciate that partnership. And with that, I will move on to, is there anything, anybody?
Thank you, Mayor. I need to pull item A.
I'm going to do public comment first.
Okay, no, thanks.
No comment. Public comment. Everybody's good? Thank you. Sorry, Councilmember Ford. So I'm going to open public comment on the consent agenda.
Madam Mayor, Terry Simons, Morro Bay. I'd like to have the council discuss item A3. Preempting the actual on-the-agenda discussion, there seems to be a lot of support for that maritime extension, and I'm very happy to say that I do also support that. However, in going in depth to the staff report on that, I noticed that there's a proposed master plan item that includes a fairly large tent structure auditorium-like facility that I believe is intended to be some sort of a theater. I am very concerned because the amount of public restrooms that are available in the general neighborhood is down to just one restroom, and it's quite a ways from the museum. And I think that adding an assembly use on that site without adding additional restroom facilities is probably not a good idea. And I would hope that as the Maritime Museum moves forward with their master plan processing and approval, that either the Maritime Museum or the city or some joint venture provide additional restrooms to support what obviously is a very popular facility in the community, but underserved in terms of restrooms. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment on the consent agenda? AGP?
Thank you, Mayor Wickson. There are currently no raised hands in the queue.
Thank you. With that, I will close public comment on the consent agenda and bring it back to council. And I will ask if anyone would like to pull any items between A1 to A12.
Yes, now, now's the time. I apologize for earlier. Yes, I would like to pull item A3 because I will be recusing myself from that item, and so I'd like to pull it so I can leave the space here. And I believe that's it for now. Thank you.
Anyone else? A3. Everyone else good? And I have a motion to approve items A1 through A12 minus A3.
I'll move for approval of items A1 through A, what was it?
12.
12. With the setting aside of item A3.
And a second?
A second.
Thank you. And we'll just do a voice vote, please. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And with that, we will excuse Councilmember Ford very quickly.
Yeah, and I shouldn't state why. I'm recusing myself because, due to potential economic conflict of interest, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Ford. So item A3 has been pulled, and is there any questions from anyone on item A3 based on public comment? Any clarification? Mr. Graham, could you address that real quick for us?
There is a public bathroom that's, you know, that's adjacent to the site. The permits that are associated with the improvements that would potentially take place in the future are not in front of the council this evening. So probably not something that would be good for the council to discuss. I think if there were issues related to restrooms or lack thereof, they would have to bring in porta potties, things like that for events that they might be having, just like any other event that we have in the city. So I think there's ways to address that in the near term and in the long term. I don't think they plan on having events every weekend, but if they did, we'd probably have to have a different discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. With that.
Can I ask you about the parking study, the Walker study, that one of the speakers asked about and the feasibility of parking because of the museum taking up that space there? The feasibility of the back, you know, boat parking, is that, was that considered in the study?
Not specifically. We did have conversations when the staff met and discussed the parking opportunities over there, especially the potential deployment of paid parking down along the Embarcadero and looking at areas where you would provide free parking because you need to have both. One of the areas we were looking at was the triangle lots and specifically the area where the current boat storage is. Be getting rid of that and then paving that area and having that be available for folks for free. But those were the conversations. I mean, there's no decisions have been made on that. There's no, there's not been any, you know, permitting for that type of thing. It's just part of the conversation that's taken place to this point.
And it wasn't part of the study? Okay.
The evaluation, I mean, no, the the Walker study did evaluate the need or lack thereof for a parking structure and found that parking structure wasn't warranted, meaning we wouldn't be able to probably fund it through fees and that type of thing because it wouldn't get used enough. Was the basic outcome of the report. Maybe that's what you were asking.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions? Nope. With that, I will make a motion to approve item A3 and ask for a second.
I'll second that.
Thank you. And all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries for zero, one. Thank you. With that, before we move into our appeal for public hearing, each speaker will have the appellant and the applicant will have 10 minutes each. We're going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. Anyone can take their seat, please. Thank you, everyone. Hello? Thank you. We're going to move on to item B1. If you can go outside to talk, thank you. I have an appeal of the planning commission approval of a proposed mixed-use residential live-work project that includes five attached residential dwellings, two with live-work space on the garage level located at 1140 Alessandro Avenue. And with that, I will And with that, I will turn it over to, thank you, to Ms. Hubbard.
So this is an appeal of Planning Commission approval of a mixed-use development at 1140 Alessandro. Summary of the Planning Commission project approval, which occurred on August 1, 2023. The Planning Commission found the project to be suitable for the area, meeting the general plan and the land use plan and municipal code requirements. The exterior design has architectural interest in articulation, creating a great buffer between light industrial commercial uses on Alessandro and beyond on Quintana and the single-family homes along Morango Drive. The project meets the special development standards of the MCR zoning district. These are images of the view of the project from the two different street frontages. Continuing the Planning Commission review summary, the project is required to provide frontage improvements along Alessandro Street and Morango Drive. The improvements along Morango Drive are subject to a deferral agreement until such time as the planning or Public Works Department determines that the improvements are needed. The project was also approved for a five-foot abandonment of the public right-of-way along Morango Drive, expanding the abandonment approved by City Council in 1992. Planning Commission approved the project in a 4-1 vote with three added conditions. The sculpture or artwork in the right-of-way at the corner must be approved by the director. The CCNRs shall include disclosure of the proximity of industrial uses to the residents, and a recommendation from Public Works to review designs for future improvements at the intersection of Alessandro and Morango Drive. Betty Winholt filed an appeal on 8/11/23. The grounds for appeal are, number one, vacation of the five-foot section of public right-of-way along Morango Drive. Staff response is the city engineer has the authority to make recommendations related to abandonment or vacation of city right-of-way. In 1992, a four-foot by 113-foot area was approved for abandonment by the city council. During the review of this project, the applicant and the Public Works Department determined that it was a better, more consistent street design to increase the abandonment request to five feet for the length of the site's Morango frontage tapering off at the Y-intersection of Morango and Alessandro. The image shows the yellow is the new area and the pink is the four feet that was approved in 1992. Grounds for appeal, number two, inconsistency with what the building is being called and what facilities are included in the drawing plans. Staff response is the zoning designation is MCR, which is mixed commercial and residential. The project is a five residential dwelling, two of which include live-work space for low-impact commercial uses such as artist studio, woodworking, et cetera. The land use plan identifies live-work as an ideal use to buffer between commercial uses and residential uses. The project was specifically designed to meet this criteria. The residential units can be described with the common term attached residential units, or more commonly known as townhouse units. Grounds for appeal, number three, the setbacks. This project has been in planning review for almost four years, including two Planning Commission public hearings, one that was conceptual review to provide suggestions to the applicant for a better project, and one was August 1, 2023, the public hearing in which the Planning Commission approved the project. The setbacks and the request for continuous right-of-way abandonment has been identified as a key issue to enabling this project to move forward since the first Planning Commission review in 2021. The Planning Commission has the discretion to approve reduced setbacks if it results in a better design, and have consistently accepted this as necessary for this project to move forward. Grounds for appeal, four, building orientation. Given the site shape and topography, as well as two differing zoning districts on each side of the site, the Planning Commission found that the placement of the building on the site as approved meets several findings related to the MCR special development standards, such as landscaping buffers along the streets and placement of the project on the site to allow the commercial portions to be visually separate from the residential portion. Grounds for appeal, five, impacts to the neighborhood. There was a public comment about traffic and parking. Although this project will produce more vehicle trips than a vacant site, the hearing discussion also noted that the project will eliminate the current issues of illegal parking on the site and trespass, including overnight parking. Grounds for appeal, six, lack of public improvement in a timely fashion. Staff response, the project has more frontage on public streets than most projects. However, it is conditioned to provide frontage improvements along both streets. The public, frontage improvements along Morango Drive are subject to a deferral agreement until the Public Works Department determines that frontage improvements are necessary or are a part of a larger Public Works project. At the time the improvements are required, the property owner will receive a 30-day notice. They then have six months to complete the improvements or coordinate with Public Works if the improvements are part of a larger project. Requested relief or action. Number one, reexamine for compliance with the items mentioned in the grounds for appeal. Staff response, this hearing meets the requested reexamine for compliance that the applicant, appellant requests. Two, requirement for public benefit if the public improvements are not timely. Staff response, the city municipal code does not require any public benefit in association with the deferral of frontage improvements. Morro Bay Municipal Code, Section 14.44.040, grants authority for deferral of frontage improvements to the director of Public Works. That said, this applicant is already proposing a public benefit by offering to landscape and provide maintenance services for the unused point of the property at Morango and Alessandro. Staff recommendation is that City Council adopt Resolution 60-23, denying the appeal and upholding the Planning Commission approval of CDP 22-004, CUP 22-06, and TTM 22-04 for the proposed new mixed-use project at 1140 Alessandro Street. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Hubbard. Questions for staff? Looking to my left, Councilmember Ford.
Thank you, Mayor Wixom, and thank you, Ms. Hubbard, for the report. In full disclosure, I want to let you know that I met with Betty Winholt at the site, so I just want to make sure that everyone's aware that I did meet with her. I do have some questions. One of my questions is, when I was looking at the, the plans for this development, I noticed the maximum height, and can you explain further to me where the height is measured from on the property?
Yes, I can. The height is measured from the average natural grade, and so the average natural grade is a formulation of the highest and the lowest grade around the foundation of the property. So this site has an extreme slope, and so the average natural grade is between the high point and the low point.
Okay, so it'd be, so on that slope, it'd be like halfway up it would be?
Yes, something like that.
Okay. That was a really technical way of saying that. I have another question regarding the, the front of the property where the front doors are going to be located on Morango. Regarding the trees that are currently there and the, like ice plant and all of that, would that be the city, since it's currently on city property, is it our job to remove it, or is it the developer's job to do that?
The developer will remove it, and they have a landscape plan included in their project.
Okay, great. I do have one more question. Hearing, you know, when we, when I was there, a couple of neighbors, you know, expressed concern about the parking, as you've heard already. And my question is, is there a way, has the developer or the city come up with a way to detour the parking? I know we're going to encourage, the parking is encouraged on Alessandro, not on Morango. What, what are, what will be done to discourage parking on that more narrow street?
That's really a Public Works decision, but public right-of-way is available for anyone that lives in the area or doesn't live in the area to park on.
I'll add that the Public Works Department is considering no parking signs on Morango adjacent to the development.
Okay. That, that definitely answers the question. Thank you, both. I don't have any other questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ford, questions?
I'm going to wait.
Councilmember Barton, questions?
I was curious about the comment talking about the four-foot wide, 113-foot-long area that was approved for abandonment by the city in 1992. It's just, it's just kind of interesting. How did, how did that, how did that happen? How did that unfold? And it goes on to talk about the 1960s-era semi-subterranean building extending more than four feet into the public right-of-way.
Yes, so probably the applicant can talk best about that, but it was presented to the city. I don't know if it was part of a project or just to solve the encroachment problem with the existing building.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else? Councilmember Landrum?
I also want to disclose that I met with Betty Winholt, too. I, I would like to ask, well, first of all, I want to, I want to say that I had, the first time I went out to the property, I was by myself, and I had a hard time from the, where the posting was and how it was oriented, the paper. I had a really hard time because it was upside down. The way you were looking at it, you had to kind of rotate it in your mind, and it wasn't, it wasn't laying the same way as the street, you know, so I felt like that was a little bit deceiving. It could have been, it could have been better posted, I think. Because the triangle was pointing, what, direct south rather than north? Is that right?
You're saying the sign was upside down?
Mm-hmm. The posting that's showing the project on the fence of the property?
I can't speak to how it was put on the side.
Okay, well, I'm just, I'm just letting you know, it was, for me, it was confusing, and I was glad that I went back when she was there because it was made more clear to me.
Okay, appreciate that. It gets put on site by administrative staff, and, you know, maybe that's something we should review before it goes out.
Right. And I, I noticed in what you were just talking about, how, this is what struck me, is how would people illegally park on the site? Because to me, it looked like it was fenced, and there was no way to get in there.
That's information we got in the last public hearing from the public, that people were parking illegally on the site and staying overnight.
Oh, okay. I don't see how they could do that, but and was it ever considered that there be less setbacks, that the project modify so that there are less?
The first Planning Commission hearing for conceptual review was specifically to talk about the setbacks, so that the property owner didn't invest more in the plan. It does meet the special development standards of the MCR zone, which requires five feet.
And there's been a lot of, while I was there, too, there were a lot of, I think, three or four different residents came out and were concerned about the project, and their concerns, one of them, most common one was the parking situation. And logically, whether it says no parking or not, a person visiting a house or a person living in a house would park by their front door. I mean, at night, they might park in their garage if they're not using their garage for storage or some other use. But how are we enforcing the no parking, or is it like the rest of the parking in Morro Bay that is not enforced?
That's, that's really, this is the first I've heard that Public Works is talking about making no parking on that one side of the street, so that would be enforced by whoever enforces parking.
Okay.
But generally, the project was designed with more than the minimum number of parking spaces, all accessible from Alessandro. So unless people are not parking their cars in their garage, then...
Which is really common these days, honestly.
But there's access from the house from both sides, so it seems like people would use their garage, but I don't know that there's an ordinance that makes people use their garage.
Right, and visitors would certainly, when you're visiting a house, you don't park, you don't, when the garage is in the back, you just tend to typically park by the front door, and so...
And that would be like a visitor to any, any of the houses.
Right, right, but it's, and the size of the project with as many bedrooms as there are, and then it just seems like it's under, a little underparked. I'm just curious as, no?
And it's, it's actually lower density than could be on that site.
Okay. And then about the open space, I'm, I'm curious about, could you explain that a little better to me, the common and the private open space? Are they at the minimum, or is there a?
Well, so they're suggesting that they use until Public Works has another plan for the corner public right-of-way. There's a pretty large area there, that that's what they're offering to landscape and maintain as their open space area. The subdivision requirements suggest that they have a certain amount of open space, but this is a challenging site, and Planning Commission can make deviations from requirements
I see.
to result in a better project.
And that's, that's not part of the parcel, that city land?
That corner is part of the
Oh, it is.
public right-of-way.
Oh, okay, so it's the city owns it. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So I'm going to piggyback on that real quick. Just, so what happens to that open space if the city determines to do something else with that right-of-way? Then how do they meet the requirement for?
They wouldn't. It's not required to have that. It's a recommendation, but projects with conditional use permit and Planning Commission discretionary review can have requirements that differ from the standard.
Okay. I just have two questions, and then I'm ready for the applicants. And I will share that I visited the site also. I will share that when I went the first time, separate, as I think four of us I know have visited individually, it was very confusing. I will share that it was extremely confusing, and until I went back the second time, did I understand the way it was laid out either, and I'd like to think I have enough common sense to have figured it out. And yes, I met with the appellant, Betty Winholt, there also. During the time I was there, four of the eight residents stopped by, came out, and engaged also in the overall concern with most people in that neighborhood supportive of the housing project. It seemed that all of them questioned the parking. That seems to be the issue, not on Alessandro, but on Morango, certainly. So my questions, real quick, just would be whether or not the garages can be converted to ADUs?
Yes, they can.
Okay. So there's no additional, so that parking would go away theoretically, and there would be no additional parking required for those five ADUs?
Just like any other house in
Got it. Just wanted to clarify on an already challenged area. And I watched, I was here at the Planning Commission meeting, but I don't remember. Could you please tell me which unit is identified as a low-income unit?
I believe it's Unit C in the center.
Thank you. Thank you. With that, and you wanted to export it?
Thank you. I also wanted to disclose that I met with Ms. Winholt on Sunday, along with Councilmember Ford, to walk the property. And there is a lot going on there. There is a property kind of off to the side where clearly it looks as if it's been abandoned, so it does make for some confusing boundaries, I think, to that end of the property there. But my question was, or maybe my observation with regard to parking, is, my question would be first, I should say this, where are, where are the six to eight that were identified? Where are the six to eight that were identified in the report exactly?
So I believe the six to eight was in the original Planning Commission report and that's the estimate of the number of parking spaces after they do the frontage improvements along Alessandro.
Okay, so frontage meaning the sidewalk area, adding in the two that are part, the two park areas that are included along with the ADA, so on either side of those, on the side of the park?
No, in the street.
I understand, in the street, but not including across the street where the store...
No, just the frontage of the site.
Okay.
And that parking doesn't count towards the parking requirements for the lot. It's just, it was pointed out because once you put the frontage improvement in, it delineates those areas adjacent to curbs and that was the approximate number of parking spaces that could fit along that area.
Yeah, and that goes to what I was just gonna comment on, is that I did notice as I was there that we saw at least one person come out from behind. I think that some of those homes up on Marengo have secondary units. And I did see somebody come out from the back and around and down to get into their car on the opposite side of this development and then drive off. So I do, it does seem to me, it appeared as if some people who have maybe secondary units or rentals or something going on, I'm not sure, that people were parking down on that side of the street, so opposite of the moment. I just wanted to clarify that. And then also, while we're open to the Public Works aspect, Mr. Qualick, if I could ask you, can you please explain what would trigger, what exactly triggers, in this case especially since we're looking at curbs, gutters and sidewalks on the, what would appear the garage side, if you will, or of these units, as opposed to, say, triggering where the front entrances are? Can you just explain that?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Edwards. So on the garage side of the units, the developer will be required to make the frontage improvements. On the other side, it would be a deferral until the Public Works Department determines that there is enough adjacent infrastructure where it would make sense to add the frontage improvements that we're asking the developer to design. So I took a ride over there today to kind of have another look there. And, you know, to me, it'd be a bit out of place right now to have sidewalk, curb and gutter there as there is no other sidewalk, curb and gutter on Marengo. It would create some complicated drainage issues as well. And so we'd really be looking at more of a fuller build out of the area, then we could address those other issues that we're seeing. And that's what would trigger the request for them to complete those improvements.
Thank you very much for that clarification, appreciate it.
Can I piggyback on that, Mr. Qualick? How would you address the issue? If the road's not wide enough, how are you gonna, I mean, if we're delaying curb, gutter and sidewalk, so then basically this project wouldn't have to do it at all? And then somebody else, I mean, how is that gonna work? The guy down the street where the abandoned property is is gonna have to put it in because the street's still so narrow? So how do you address it? Is it just never gonna have curb, gutter and sidewalk? Is that basically what we're saying? Because the road's not wide enough, there's nowhere to go?
In the department's view, it's in the interest of the city to have the ability to direct the property owner there to put in improvements if they're warranted in the future. And so for that purpose, we'd want to have the deferral in place. If we don't put in the deferral now, then we lose our chance at getting frontage improvements that are performed not by the city.
The right-of-way also, in this instance, is, you know, wider than the paved area of the street. So there actually is room for the improvements to be put in place. It's just normally, what Public Works usually does, and I don't mean to speak for Mr. Qualick here, but you would get those, the other property right now that you've called the abandoned one, that's not in a great shape, kind of disheveled, right? When that property came forward to development, that would be typically when you trigger it, because then you would have it along the whole frontage and you wouldn't have a piece of it sticking out there, which can create drainage issues, can create traffic hazards and things like that. I mean, there's things you can do to mitigate some of the traffic issues, but it does kind of create weird situations there.
Yep, and I would also just add to that, that regardless of what we do, we always would have the option of putting in no parking there. That would also mitigate the width issue.
Thank you.
I have one more question. Back to the, we're just gonna continue this, sorry, make it quick. Based off of a comment that was made earlier, how would one who has noticed that a parking sign is not being followed, how does one, you know, to, okay, let me back up. If we were to decide to put no parking signs there, you know, to make sure that we keep that street as open as possible, it makes the neighbors happy, but people are not abiding by the signage and our parking there, how would a neighbor who witnesses a car parked in a no-parking zone, what can they do if someone's parked there? I don't know if that'd be a question for the chief. So I was asking to enforce a no-parking zone. What are the steps to take if you see that someone's parked in a no-parking zone and you want them to leave the parking zone? What are their rights?
It has to be designated no parking, either with a red curb or signage, proper signage. And then if someone is parked, they can be ticketed. And then tickets would continue 24 hours and then if not moved within 72 hours, it can be towed.
Okay, and if they don't just naturally get ticketed because, you know, cops driving by or whatever, can a citizen who lives in the house that observes there's cars parked there, they have the right to have that car reported?
If any citizen sees a vehicle parked in a no-parking zone, they can contact the police department and will come out and evaluate and ticket if necessary.
Okay, so there is a way to enforce the no-parking sign is what I was just wanting to clarify, so, okay, I have no other further questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I have one more question. What is the percentage of the road that, that side of Marengo that is the property in comparison to the property that is on the southern, the other property, the only other one there? Do you know what I'm saying?
The length?
Just rough, like, to me, it looks like the majority of that strip of Marengo is the property that we're talking about, the development property.
You mean the length of the frontage?
The length, yes, the length of the frontage.
I would, just from looking at the aerial, I would say maybe it's two-thirds to one-third from the abandoned.
Right. So why would we waive the curb and gutter when it's, the majority of the street is...
It's not waived.
Well, why would we defer it? Is it a financial situation?
The Public Works, I think they just explained because it can create an awkward traffic and drainage system if part of the street has frontage improvements and the rest is undeveloped.
Right, but if you're waiting for the trigger of the other property to become developed, you're eventually saying that you're going to require that. So why would you, if the majority of it is that lot, why would you not start with that larger lot?
Sure, I can answer that question, Councilmember Landrum. That's typically not the consideration we look at in terms of percentage of the street. What we're looking at is the whole street there and then down-street towards Alessandro. Now, primarily in this case, we're thinking about drainage. We don't have facilities down the street to handle that drainage. So that's the major concern of the Public Works Department. There's also some other considerations as well, that we'd have to cut a curb ramp into the sidewalk in Alessandro. So for that reason, we're deferring it. I'm not sure if that's helpful or...
Then where will the water drain? If you do nothing and you develop it, where will the water drain?
Well, currently, it would be going into pervious soil, so a lot of it would just be going down into where the development is.
What percentage of the property is going to not be paved and built on? It seems like it's the majority of the project is, I mean, there's very little that's not developed, right? Or asphalt.
Well, there's the open space area, the proposed pocket park, and the slope is going down in that direction.
So the drainage would all go to that pocket park, the little triangle?
Some of it would, sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. With that, I will open the hearing and invite the appellate up and provide 10 minutes and be followed by the applicant for 10 minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Once again, my name is Betty Winholz. I'm basically gonna go over the email that I sent to you as my comments, but I would like to preface it by saying, contrary to a previous comment, I am not against this project. I would like this project to be better and I want it to be of benefit to the neighborhood, not a detriment, which is, I think, something we can add to help with that. In terms of the procedure, I would like you to note that I was not informed of the appeal was happening this evening and that the yellow public notice sign that was referred to earlier was actually put on the east side rather than the north side, which is claimed to be the front of the lot and where it should have been posted. That being said, in terms of the content of my points that have been enumerated earlier, this is where my concerns are. One, the abandonment of the right-of-way. Abandonment, and this refers back to the maps that you have in your packet, the abandonment is marked in yellow among, along Marengo as it curves into the Alessandro to the north on page 244 of your packet. However, the table on page 242 states, quote, "five feet of Alessandro for the shop portion of Unit A." So I couldn't find where this was marked on the map, so I don't know if there is additional land that's being granted that's right-of-way or if this is included, but we don't know where it is on this little map. Second on that is without stakes or markers, it is a guess where the property line is on Marengo and therefore how far up the slope, the steep one, that the five-foot abandonment lies. If one uses the four-foot encroachment from the northwest corner of the current shop, it appears that the boundary line is near the toe of the slope. So even though, this question was last earlier, where is that average natural grade? It's actually gonna be higher than what appears on the land right now. I mean, we would have thought that the three-story building would have started lower and maybe it still does, but if the average natural grade moves it up, then the question becomes, did the three stories start at that level or is it subterranean parking and then the house begins at the average natural grade and the two stories go above? And then third, under this topic with the use of the words, quote, "less earthwork and fill" and quote, "westerly walls of the ground floors provide the supporting of the steep slope." So are these walls actually gonna be the retaining walls, which are part of the walls of the building, and are there special requirements for retaining walls? Number two, inconsistency with the building is being called out. It's a subdivision, certainly, they never in the staff report used the term "compact infill" and yet it meets the definition of compact infill in our zoning code. Quote, "a project which would result in the creation of lots with sizes smaller than those otherwise allowed in the zoning ordinance." So it seems to me that this requirement for open state is not an option, but it's really a requirement that we have open space. Two, I believe all, public open, not public, the open space, which is not the private for the subdivision. And then, I believe all criteria for compact infill are addressed, therefore the common open space should be fulfilled. And number two, we've already addressed this, that the second units can become ADUs and that the private open space is that minimum requirement met. Regarding setbacks and orientations, this really is the confusing part of the property because the north, the very narrow point, is considered the front and yet the doors are gonna face the west. And so then if you move your front doors, do you also change the setback? And in this case, they haven't, even though they're calling the front doors on the west. And maybe that's okay if there are other benefits like the parking that's being requested by the neighbors and by this appeal. And then in MCR, it is required, and I'll quote, that a 10-foot frontage setback is a shall in your code when they're across the street from a residential zone. So this plan has a five-foot setback, should it be having a 10-foot setback. And then the impact to the neighborhood in both written and oral testimony, the number one major concern of the neighbors on Marengo is the parking. There are no neighbors on Alessandro because it's a storage unit. And Marengo is a 60-foot wide street on paper, but it's currently paved to less than that. There is an abandonment of the right-of-way for the benefit of the development, but we also need to make sure that they abide by the curb, gutter and sidewalk for the benefit of that street. A statue at the intersection of Alessandro and Marengo is an unwanted, and I, my personal opinion, but I haven't heard anybody say, "Oh, let's put a statue in our neighborhood." Okay, that's the first time I've ever heard of anything like that and no other neighborhood in Moro Bay has that. A lack of public improvements in a timely fashion, and this refers directly to the deferral of the improvements on Marengo Street. So I have four requested reliefs. And the first one required the curb, gutter and sidewalk on Marengo as not deferred. This is the most critical piece to the neighborhood, which is already impacted by street parking to the extent that Marengo residents, as noted earlier, already park on Alessandro. And when I was there over the weekend, all the frontage parking and it was, you know, not parallel, everybody was parking into their lots, but they were loaded with cars. And that's before this development even comes on. Well, and other comments have been noticed that, you know, if you go to visit somebody, you don't drive up to their garage, you drive up to their front door and you leave your car there. Number three, please require that the common open space be honored and that, to me, that that triangle, which is currently city property and is of no use, that could be actually donated as right-of-way to the developer to allow him to have his open space, create a beautiful place for the neighborhood. And that that would be in exchange for the cut where the two streets come together and they're at different heights, that somehow that that could be his public benefit to fix that area, as was noted by Public Works. And that, let's see, what else do we need to say? Oh, and I did want to speak to a financial hardship because if this is a trouble, because it was alluded to in the Planning Commission staff report, that to put curb, gutter and sidewalks on both sides of this property is a bit cumbersome, then I would think you would want to give up the Alessandro public improvements because nobody's down there. You would want to keep the public right-of-way improvements on Marengo because that benefits the street, it benefits the neighbors and it will benefit the new development. So, and then my confusing questions, what is the quantity of abandonment on Alessandro to be added to the abandonment on Marengo? Are there retaining wall requirements? Where is the property line since it wasn't staked on the upper road on Marengo? And I think that if it was, I agree that there is room for curb, gutter and sidewalk, but maybe we need to let the sidewalk go and put in that parking, because that's the number one request of everyone, that it be on that upper road. We already answered the ADUs and there was a question raised by the public about whether there should be a stop sign on one end of the road or the other. And thank you for asking which unit was the low-income, because that was asked at planning and it was said also Unit C, but it was not put into your staff report that it was identified. I do have five slides I'd like to show you, if I could, real quickly. This is the neighborhood, this is Marengo Street, and the property in question is the lower left-hand side. So you can see it's already developed as a neighborhood and there are second units behind most of these houses, why that's, there's so much parking. Next. And that's the empty area right in front where the city owns. This is Marengo from the other end of the street and you can see how narrow it is, you can see how cars already stick out into the paved right-of-way. And we're not sure how far up on the right side we have access there. Next, please. And we're not sure how far up on the right side we have access there. Next, please. This is Alessandro, and you can see it already is a wider street. It has a sidewalk on one side, so do we really need a sidewalk on the right hand there where the fence is? Next. Can I just finish the last couple of slides, please? This is the piece of property that's owned by the city, and you can see there where the two streets come together, it's unlevel. That could be the public benefit that could be fixed by the development, and then they could be given that grassy, dirty area as their open space and make something decent of it in exchange. And the last one, or the next to the last? And that's a better angle of how those two streets don't match up very well and create a hazard. And then the last one addresses the question about having a sidewalk that interrupts a property that doesn't have a sidewalk. But this is here on Piney Way, and it works fine. You can go ahead and require the concrete sidewalk, and then the next property doesn't have one, and then the next one does. It says that properties develop, they'll connect. So I don't know that there's any need to defer, I think, until the end property's ready. And this is not unique, I can identify properties in North Morro Bay and other places in South Morro Bay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lor?
Hi, um, excuse me. Public speaking fair enough. So, thanks for letting me speak. Excuse me. I had emailed each one of the council members and the mayor to ask to meet out on site so I could explain the project. I received no responses whatsoever. So, to state that, I'd be happy to answer any of the questions, I'll be happy to explain the project to you. I've spent, we began this project, I've owned this property for 30 years. When I started this project, I'm a design builder, custom builder. I've had my woodshop there for the last 30 years. This project, this area's always been a, you know, it was a lumberyard, it was a diesel, it was a trucking station. It's been my contractor yard and my woodshop for the last 30 years. So what I wanted to do was to create live-work spaces there, so other people could come to this area, you know, have a commercial space below their residence. You know, traditionally, it has an old-time, European feel to it. So they could, you could live, work in the same place, be able to raise a family and create. Mostly, I was thinking of crafts or artists, you know, artist spaces. There's been a lot of talk about that triangle as being, you know, one of the things, the concept of that was to use that triangle as a community garden area, and to give it back to, you know, as a gift back to the community. The open space that was mentioned, this is not a compact infill. These, the lots were developed with the zoning code intact, you know, as it was. Each lot that was developed, there's five lots, or could've been six. Each lot was developed with, to, above the minimum standard that's required for that track map development, that PUD, quote-unquote. It's not necessarily called a PUD, but that's essentially what it is. So, the, um, excuse me, I'm losing my way, I'm not, I'm better at solving problems than explaining them. I would've liked to have been able to show you the project, show you how it was developed, show you the thought process that was behind it. We originally did a concept plan that I developed, and we put to the Planning Commission. It was publicly noticed. I went to every neighborhood, every neighbor on that street, knocked on the door, talked to each neighbor, each neighbor didn't have a problem with the plan that I met. The neighbors that I didn't, that were not home, I left a note asking them to call me, and I would be happy to meet with them at any time, show them the plans, and discuss it. We then went to the Planning Commission, it was a notice meeting, they all knew about it. There were no objections to the initial plan, the initial concept plan. And then I, then it's taken the last three years, three and a half years, and a lot of my time, and a lot of my money, to develop this concept with the thought process that we had basically solved all the problems. Because it fits the boxes, it, there was no neighborhood complaint at that time, or at any time after that, until it came up during the Planning Commission. And I was basically sidelined, you know, just hit broadside with it, that I didn't really appreciate at that point. The issue with the sidewalk, curb gutter and sidewalk, we have essentially almost 760 linear feet of curb gutter and sidewalk to, if it's required around the complete property. That's more than 85% of the boundary of the property. This is, this has never been required, I served for 12 years on the Planning Commission. I had never seen that required on any project. And, in fact, if you look at the 35-unit apartment complex that's on Highway 41, they have, they have boundaries on all three sides, bounded by streets, and they only have curb gutter and sidewalk on one of the frontages, and the smallest frontage at that point. So to require curb gutter and sidewalk around the perimeter of the property would create problems for multiple reasons. For one, it would create a huge asphalt area in that triangle section. It would also create, you know, that curb gutter and sidewalk that wraps around the apex of the arc on the apex of the triangle is over a 10-foot grade differential, top to bottom. So you're gonna have a sidewalk that's going probably about 18 to 20 feet, that's gonna drop 10 feet. So if you can explain to me how I'm supposed to do an ADA-compliant sidewalk at that point, I'll be happy to listen to you at that. So that was part of the generation of the community garden in that triangle area, which would be maintained by either subscription to the homeowners or be maintained by, so the first, the thought process is that the first option is homeowners wanna want a plot or a section of that, they have first option. Second option is to offer it to the community. The third option is it'll be maintained by the maintenance agreement in the landscaping, for the landscaping plan. We've done a full landscape plan for that, so you can see that. If you haven't seen the landscape plan, then it was in the full, completed, submitted to the Planning Department. And we'll be, that will be the operable plan we'll be working from. Water, water transport, we basically have, to handle the runoff from the roofs and the hardscapes, it basically goes into a dry river, a dry stream course that then comes down and is captured in a cistern. And then any overflow then runs into the parking area, which will be paved, will be pavers, the permeable pavers. So you have water catchment there, you also have water catchment to use for the landscaping and the gardening area. Trying to set this up as environmentally sensitive as possible. We've done, I've done a lot of work, this is how I've always built houses and designed houses. I went to school, and one of my professors was Edra Mazearia, who did, who wrote the Passive Home Book back in '72. So I've been building that way ever since. I'll leave the rest of the area open for questions. The, one of the, I'll address some of the parking issues. One of the parking issues is, and I hate to say it, and I didn't wanna bring this up, but the residents on Marengo are illegally parking their RVs, trucks, and boats perpendicular to the street and extending out into the right-of-way. Where they are parked is totally on the right-of-way of the city right-of-way. That's a 60-foot section of roadway section, right-of-way section. Most residential sections, right-of-way sections are only 50-foot. This is handling seven houses, and you have a 60-foot street right-of-way to handle seven houses that are existing right now. The other, let's see. The other thing, how the, you mentioned, you asked how the encroachment of the building happened. This has happened, this happens continually in Morro Bay, and it's come, it's happened, it happens because the initial building was built in '62, 1962, was permitted by the county as a permitted structure and was legally built at that time. I still have the sign-off card for the building inspection. You know, it was in the shop when I got it, that's a long story. What happened, as far as I understand, from talking to my surveyors, and what I've seen in other parts of the city, is you had, the initial monuments that were set in Morro Bay were set in the 1800s. Those monuments were set by rod and chain coming over Highway, what is now Highway 41, from the baseline that ran up and down the state. So the monuments that were set, excuse me, the monuments were set in Morro Bay were set off. During the '74 geotectic year, they used geosatellites location, and they reset the monuments, and so the property lines have changed since then. So that's why the building was encroaching into the right-of-way. So I'll be happy to answer any other questions, and would, you know, and I'm just looking to create housing. 20% of this project is affordable housing, which is a burden in its own right. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lor.
Available for questions.
Thank you. With that, I will invite the public up for comment.
Thank you. That was all very interesting. And the gentleman sounds like he's done an amazing job of making this green. But I have a question. My name's Natalia Merzoian, by the way. The question is, because it's, from what I understand, going to be zoned light industrial, residential, combined? Which, I'm not sure if that exists in other parts of Morro Bay, but I'm not aware of it. And I'm just wondering how, you know, with all the chemicals, forever chemicals, and problematic substances in our environment and out there commercially available now, how the city will ensure the safety of, you know, our sewer system being contaminated from such a development, or really from any, anybody who happens to use deleterious things in their situations, wherever that may be. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jonathan King. I live, I guess you could say, ground zero of where we're talking about, I'm on Marengo. And parking gets mentioned a lot, and that parking is important, but I think something that's really critical to remember is that parking problems cause traffic problems, and traffic problems are safety problems. It's all connected. And talking about closing traffic to one side of the street, the people are just gonna park on the other side of the street, you'll have the same problem as far with the narrowness of the road, and the, that's, I think, has gotta be taken into account. And if you saw Ms. Winholz's photographs, you didn't see any RVs sticking out into the street like it was alleged earlier just now. As I, I know on my side of the street, nobody does that. I know there's a RV parked in a driveway, has been there for quite a while. But anyway, like I said, the parking is the main thing. I'm not against the project, I'm against the front doors facing Marengo. My mailbox is on that side of the street, and it's been knocked over three times at late at night, where I've gone out in the morning and somebody has driven into it. And same with my neighbor. And with that project there, and somebody's gonna run into a front door, I mean, sooner or later, because the front doors are gonna be so close to the street. But that's my two cents on it. Like I said, I'm not against it, but I am against it with the front doors facing Marengo, because that's where all their visitors are gonna park, no matter what you do. Thank you.
Evening, Madam Mayor, my name is Terry Simons. I spoke on this issue when it was before the Planning Commission. My summary opinion of the project at that time was that it was overbuilt and underparked. Nothing has changed. I just sent you several pages of fairly detailed analysis of what I consider incomplete issues that should've been developed by staff. Number one, the alleged current encroachment that wants to be expanded, that's gone. That was approved in 1992, there's no evidence that it was ever recorded. And since there's a two-year statute on recording an encroachment, that encroachment doesn't exist. So the opportunity to expand an encroachment that doesn't exist is irrelevant. What you're being asked to do is approve a five-foot encroachment along the entire strip of the property, simply because there's a very small encroachment of a building that has long since outlived its economic value, it was built in the '60s, and will probably have to be significantly modified to support the building that's being planned to be put on top of it. So there's, these are non-issues. The other issue from staff is that they describe the technical front of the property being the apex of the triangle. I think any rational person looking at this project would say it has a front on Alessandro, it has a front on Marengo, it doesn't have a front out on the point. So I think that the staff in supporting the applicant's proposal to reduce the setbacks down both sides of the property based on the fact that the point is the nominal front of the property is inappropriate. It sets a horrible precedent, and I can't believe that staff has taken that direction. Lastly, there is a continuing problem that I have with the staff reports that I see on many projects that I'm concerned about, of incomplete information. In this case, there's a representation that the Public Works Department has made certain approvals and deferrals, none of which are included in the staff report. We don't know what the Public Works Department said about deferring this, when it was gonna be, and so it prompts all these questions. Circling back to the original encroachment, I can't find any documentation on that original encroachment, but I suspect, I suspect that that encroachment was done to facilitate an expansion of the building that is still there, and was probably specific to a building project that never happened. And I would guess that, at the time that encroachment was approved, that there was a requirement to do curb gutter and sidewalk, which never happened. And following the Public Works Rule of, I think it's 1918, when you exceed 50% of the frontage in a block, the city can require the frontage in a block, the city can require all property owners on that block to pay for frontage improvements. This property clearly exceeds 50% of the frontage, so I think to defer it at all is ridiculous. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, I want to welcome the new city manager of Morro Bay, Paul Donnelly. I attended the August 1st Planning Commission meeting, and where the proposed development was being heard, yet sadly, the minutes of that hearing are not included in your staff report tonight. So how can you make an informed decision without knowing what each commissioner and the public said that night? One of the commissioners was not in favor of the development. There was a great deal of discussion about parking, and I, and how it might affect the surrounding neighborhood. There are five two-car garages proposed onsite, and I asked, what if one of them were to be converted and used as a business enterprise, such as another shop? Where would those cars parked in the garages go, and what does the city require to make such a conversion? As I recall, staff said that they could not do anything to enforce the onsite parking requirements. Since that time, I've learned that pursuant to Section 17.30.130B2 of the city's municipal zoning code, quote, "All home occupation activities shall be conducted entirely within the residential unit, within a garage that is attached to the residential unit, or an enclosed accessory building. When conducted within a garage, the doors thereof shall be closed, and the area occupied shall not preclude the use of the required parking spaces for parking." This code section is not found on the city's website, as it stops short at Section 17.30.060. So I was just kind of, who maintains the city's website and gives us the stuff that we could find? It just seems right now that the code section really doesn't mean anything if you can't find it, and it just seems to be hidden words. And also, would the city's code enforcement enforce that rule? There are also, I noticed, a few typos in the staff report, whereas the word "track", T-R-A-C-K, is being used where it should be "tracked", T-R-A-C-T. Need to proofread the documents, as one of those typos is within the Resolution 60-23 that you were being asked to adopt tonight. Staff has indicated the future improvements on Marengo, such as curb gutter and sidewalk, will be deferred to a later date, if not constructed along with the building's front in Marengo. It will be virtually impossible to even do later, since the access to each unit will be in the way, and the hillside will need to be backfilled to accommodate curb gutter and sidewalk, and the Marengo street level and parcel property corners would get buried. The curb gutter and sidewalk along Marengo Drive need to be constructed at the time the building units on the property are being built. Think about that. The curb design should allow for curb cuts and sidewalk ramps lining up with the entrances to each unit. The parking lane shall be marked such that cars can't block the entrances, units on Marengo. Staff should do a cursory design now to see what difficulty is might be hiding in the details, including drainage. Thank you.
Evening, Mayor and City Council, my name's Lee Johnson, resident of Morro Bay. I'm actually here for the main event later, but I did get a chance to look at this project, and I think, as we all know, we need more housing in the city of Morro Bay. This is an excellent project, this fits what we need. I would suggest or ask that you support your Planning Commission, who reviewed this project and approved it, and move ahead tonight as its Planning Commission's recommended. Thank you.
Jamie Irons, resident of Morro Bay. The project as proposed, I'm in support of. I'm not a fan or supporter of the deferral policy as written that we have before us today. I think it's something that we need to work on, I think that's been brought up to Planning Commission, and I would hope that the City Council would support that in the future to review the frontage improvement policy that we have. And I also have a question for staff, the deferral that is being proposed tonight, is that recorded? I don't see that in the resolution, and if you can help explain, people, how the deferral policy works, as far as if it is deferred, there's a deed restriction for it to be deferred, as I understand it, that that would be helpful. Thanks.
Good evening, City Council, Linda Donnelly, Morro Bay. I'm going to finish my husband's comments, then I'll add mine. When this subdivision map records, which will make each individual unit a legal lot, the proposed unit setbacks along Marengo will be out of compliance with the city's subdivision code, which says, quote, "Frontline lot," end quote, means the line which separates the lot from the street. The commissioners and staff never considered the actual frontage setbacks based upon the orientation of the yet-to-be individual lots facing Marengo Drive. Only the open space lot, parcel F, fronts entirely along Alessandro Street. For the sake of developer, staff decided that the front of the existing property would be the west tip of the triangle, which only has 29 feet of frontage. The street right-of-way frontages along Alessandro and Marengo both have about 200 feet of frontage for each street. This is not a flag, so, this is not a flag lot, so why was the smallest frontage decided over the others? And does that seem logical to you? There are no side yard setbacks between the units. Why is that? This proposed development simply doesn't fit the neighborhood here. I hope all of you have gone out and looked for yourselves, sound like you did. My comments were just that, you know, the parking issue, Marengo is where the, is where the front doors are facing, and this project does not fit the neighborhood. It is too dense, where single-family residents are directly across the street. Put the curb, ask that they put the curb gutter and sidewalk in now. Deferred, you know, it'll never happen. I mean, seriously. I think you should have it done, ask the developer to do it now. Think the R project, if it ever happens, should be decided by the neighborhood, if there is one. And there is only a five-foot setback, and that's only if the city abandons the right-of-way on Marengo. So that means there's no setback, unless they abandon the five feet on Marengo, the city is giving the developer five feet of city street for the project. I don't know if that's common, but, you know, I think, just hearing what my husband's been saying, listening to the comments that were spoken at Planning Commission, this project isn't a complete project, it's, you know, I concur with Terry Simons and so forth, and so, just, you know, curb gutter sidewalk, thank you.
Anyone else for public comment on this item? AGP, is there anyone?
Thank you, Mayor Wixson, there are currently no raised hands in the queue.
Thank you very much. With that-
I'm sorry, as I said that, one person raised their hands. Shori, I'm going to allow you to speak.
If you could imagine for a moment the day when all of the garages become ADUs, so we then double the density of the project and eliminate the majority of the parking, where all of the cars are going to park?
Where are they?
They're all going to park in the street, and it's going to destroy the neighborhood.
Thank you. AGP, any more comments?
There are no more raised hands in the queue.
Thank you very much. With that, I will close public comment, and close the public hearing, and bring it back to council for questions. I'll look to my right, Councilmember Landrum. Any more questions of staff? You may come back to you. Perfect, Councilmember Barton? No questions? Councilmember Edwards?
I wasn't, I truly wasn't expecting some of this tonight, I'll be honest, but now that it's out there, and we're discussing the public's work aspect of this, I guess one of my questions would be is, what would be the result if we were to now, I don't even know if you can do this, if we were to now make the frontage side of this development no parking? Mr. Qualick? Like, is that something we could do? If we were to do that now, what would the result be in terms of this development, if anything, and then how would it affect that street, in your opinion?
I think, question, Councilmember Edwards, I can speak to process there.
Thank you.
Yeah, we could, we could do that, we would put up the signs, and then we'd be able to enforce parking along Marengo there, if that's your question. And if you're asking, what would the impact be to the neighborhood, I would defer to Scott Graham on that, but in terms of whether or not we can restrict parking there, yes, we can.
Clarification, that could be something immediate.
My understanding is yes.
Okay.
That could be a condition that the council adds to the project. There is sort of the issue that was raised by one of the speakers here, in that, you know, you're actually, by saying no parking on that side of the street, reducing the amount of parking, and then folks that might reside in this, or visitors that might be coming to this project, then would be parking on the other side of the street. So you, there's, in some instances unintended consequences, right? When you, when you create no parking areas, you really would be, it doesn't mean that the folks that are coming to this that can't park on the street, they can, they could just park across the street, and that could, you know, further constrain an already constrained parking situation.
You can see how this is a difficult aspect here, because, you know, I'm not up there on a regular basis, knowing where, you know, RVs are parking, where cars are parking, all I noticed was, you know, when I went up there to view the area on Sunday, and just, you know, it is definitely a wider street, and then, you know, bottlenecks down as you get closer the other way. And so, when we put no parking signs, would that also be something like red curbing in that area to the front, on that frontage area? There's no curb currently there, although there is kind of, in certain areas, like a bump of concrete, not concrete, but asphalt.
Like an AC berm.
Right.
Yeah, I'd have to look at that AC berm, but if it's what I think it is, I think the signs would be sufficient.
Okay.
And if there was something that was obviously needed to be painted red, we could do that.
And if I, if I could ask, with regard to the deferral on the, on the Marengo side of the curb gutters, it does seem that there might need to be some reviewing of that frontage policy, if I may comment. What would be the result for the developer if we were to ask to not defer and to have it be a part of the development now?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Edwards. So I'll share a staff opinion that that would, another look at that policy would certainly be welcome. You wouldn't get argument from us on that. Right now, it gives the Director of Public Works relatively broad latitude on when to put in for a deferral. Essentially, it is when there are non-standard frontage improvements, I'm sorry, if they create a potential safety hazard for pedestrian motorists, cause liability for the city, result in drainage problems, compromise handicap accessibility requirements. So, when any of those conditions exist, currently the Director of Public Works can put in for a deferral. I would defer to Mr. Graham again on what the impact, I think your second question was, what the impact to the developer would be if we did require the frontage improvements now?
Thank you.
I mean, you did hear Mr. Lor, you know, indicate that it's a lot of frontage improvements because of the fact that it's almost, the site's almost entirely surrounded, what'd he say, 80-something percent of it is surrounded by street frontage, so it's curb gutter and sidewalk all the way around, it's a very expensive improvement to make. As far as, you know, can it be done, there's going to be an issue, and we don't have a design for that right now, but there's going to be an issue at the corner where Marengo, you know, meets Alessandro. There is a significant grade differential there, and that's going to create problems from an ADA standpoint, I mean, specifically not, don't have a design right now, and haven't been working with them on the design, so can't really speak to what that looks like, but there's a potential that it, that it can't, that it won't work, at least not easily, so, it'd be a very expensive improvement.
I would add, though, that with direction from the City Council, we've done this before, not necessarily with direction from the City Council, but we can put a time limit on a deferral. So, if there's sort of a project delivery concern from a funding standpoint, we can certainly put a two- or three-year deferral, or longer, a five-year deferral, at which point we give notification to the owner that they must begin making frontage improvements, and then give them a window in which they'd have to complete that work, that would be, you know, reasonable to them, that's certainly an option.
In your experience, what kind of timeframe has, have you come across?
We look at these on a case-by-case basis, the projects are, I remember doing one for a sewer lateral, that was, I want to say, six or nine months, because the person ran out of money and couldn't complete their project, and then we came back to them, told them they had to now do the work, and they did. And so, I think for something like this, because as the property owner said, I mean, this would come at a considerable cost, and so, there's also some, some complications with the, with the design to make it ADA accessible, and to make drainage right there, I mean, it would come at a considerable cost to developers, so, you know, I wouldn't be one to judge in the moment right now on what appropriate timing would be, but I would think it'd have to be beyond a few years.
So if I can just add to that a little bit, there is a condition of approval in the Planning Commission's resolution that asks Public Works to look into the design of that intersection because of those challenges that were mentioned. The other thing that the Planning Commission mentioned is they wanted, they had some of the same concerns that you have about deferral agreements, and they wanted to do more of a global meeting to discuss what the city's intent, how many deferral agreements are out there, what is the average period of time until they're asked to make the improvements and so forth, so they had a lot of the same concerns that you're voicing tonight.
And I did watch the Planning Commission meeting, and I do remember that, now that you say it, but my concern is that we have this project before us right now, so, thank you.
I don't have any questions, but I do want to let Mr. Lor know that I apologize, your email was just found in my junk mail folder, so I'm sorry that I did not see it, because of course I would have liked to have given you both the time to meet with me, so my apologies for not catching that.
I'm going to ask a couple of questions, and then, are you, are you ready?
Whatever.
Okay. So, the five-foot abandonment right-of-way, how is that going to work then, when we get past the deferral and go back to do the curb gutter and sidewalk, if we've abandoned that far into the right-of-way? How far out are we going to encroach now?
The abandonment would move the property line to five feet out from where it currently is, so the public improvements would go from property line into the public right-of-way that's remaining.
And, and I'm sorry, I'm, so the public benefit for giving, because she shared earlier, or Mr. Qualick did, that that section of this project is about two-thirds of the street. So what is, what is the public benefit we get back for the right-of-way gift?
There's no requirement for public benefit.
Well, I know there's not a requirement, so we're not, but we're not getting anything then, other than-
He's offered to landscape the corner until it's designed.
The corner, okay. Curb gutter and sidewalk, as Mr. Irons mentioned, is that deed restricted, recorded in this agreement, so that it doesn't just get put by the wayside?
Thank you for the question, Mayor Wixson, it's, it's a recorded agreement that stays with the property.
Okay. I have more, but I'll pass it down to Councilmember Landrum, thank you.
Okay, why, can you tell me why the front is being-
Okay, why is, can you tell me why the front is being called the, the point of the triangle?
Yes, because our zoning code requires us to look at the narrowest point of the side or the narrowest property line of the site that's adjacent to a public street. And it, and that is really not a point, it's really a curvature. And so the curvature is the, the smallest frontage that is adjacent to a public street. And so it's a technical requirement, has really nothing to do with front doors or parking access, it's just a technical requirement that, that is in our zoning code.
But doesn't it also indicate setbacks where the front is?
There is a setback for the frontage and it would be from that curvature narrow point.
Which is a bigger?
At the intersection.
So it's, it's, you're gaining, the property is gaining more?
There is, yes, and it meets that setback.
So even though it's a technical requirement, it's also a technical requirement for curbs and gutters and we're not, we're not requiring?
It's Public Works and...
It, it seems like it's logical to put the front where the front doors are.
Well, no, the definition of frontage of a site has nothing to do with where the doors are or where the vehicles enter.
But that's where the setback is, the contentious setback is, right? Is where the doors, the front doors are?
I'm, why, I'm not sure it's contentious, that is where they're asking for a five-foot abandonment.
Well, I mean, it's contentious in that a lot of people are, are saying that that's an issue.
So it's, it's not, it's not an issue because our, we, we know what the front is because it's defined by the code, so we follow what the code says as far as what the frontage, that's what, that's what Nancy was saying. So we don't, we don't get to like decide upon a project-by-project basis what the front is, it's defined for us and so we just use that definition. So that's why that's the front. And so we don't, again, we don't make, we don't make that decision on a project-by-project basis, you know, based on any orientation of a project. It's just based on a lot configuration itself, but, you know, regardless of improvements.
Okay, and, oh, can, you also explain why the Planning Commission, you might have already said that, why their, the Planning Commission decision wasn't included in the packet and also the landscape plan?
The landscape plan is in the packet. If you were asking about the minutes?
Yes.
Our, our admin tech left us and went back to Arizona and we're in the process of replacing her, so we're a little backed up, not bad though, on, on minutes, we're a couple of meetings back right now.
Okay, and so am I understanding correctly that they're using, they're reusing that wall that's there and that's kind of like grandfathered in as the?
The existing building is the, becomes the foundation for that unit and becomes a usable area for that last unit.
And if it's determined that that building is not viable and it needs to be taken down, how, is that, how does that, what happens then?
You ask the applicant if they've done any studies, but I'm, I'm guessing since he's invested all of this effort and time into designing the project, that that is a viable foundation for the?
Right, but from our, the city's perspective, what, what is, do, is, do, would we then require that it goes back to the regular setback or?
At this point, sorry, turned my mic on. At this point, the project's proposed as it is and we would move it forward the way that it is unless there were changes made this evening to it. So it would be, you know, the idea is that's where the edge of the building is proposed in the, in the current approvals that went through the Planning Commission and we're not proposing to change that. Certainly, the council has discretionary authority to make changes to the project if you so wish.
Okay, so you're saying even if the building is torn down, that's still going to be the bound, the grandfathered-in edge of it?
Correct.
Okay. And, so let's see, I have a note here, parking code for working from the garage, is there?
So live-work space is not a defined term in our zoning code. So we looked to parking standards for cities that have a defined parking standard for live-work. Is this, is this addressing what you're asking?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
It was, it was one of the comments and I'm...
Okay, so we used the most conservative requirement for the two live-work spaces and created the parking. So that's the three spaces that are along the street, including one ADA space. The other, sorry to interrupt, but the, I mean, the other kind of issue related to that is, these are live-work, they are not retail, they are not businesses that are expecting customers to be coming to them. So if there was a change in use from the live-work type of business that qualified for that parking, they would have to get a use permit.
Okay, thank you. I'm good for now.
Thank you, I have another question, please. Two questions. The, why, why is there only a five-foot setback instead of 10-foot required?
You're talking about on the side?
Yeah.
So the MCR, Special Development Standards, say five feet. So it meets that, but the developer did bring this issue up early when we had a Planning Commission conceptual hearing in 2021 because he had two different designs that he presented. The one along Marengo always had a five-foot setback because of the slope and because the difficulty in developing that side of the site. But he had a version of the design that met the 10-foot setback along Alessandro. Planning Commission thought that the, the design that had the five-foot setbacks on Marengo and Alessandro was a better project and that's the one that they recommended that he continued to pursue. So there's only two sections on Alessandro, the Unit A and the Unit F, that have five-foot setbacks. And all the other units have more than the 10-foot setback.
Okay. Thank, thank you for that clarification, I appreciate it. And thank you for all the information, I know it's a lot, thank you, I appreciate it. The two live u, two units that are live-work, those units are regulated by business licensing and I, I just know that if I bought the unit here and they're doing a work project next door, my brother owned a screen printing business and the odors were horrific from that, I mean, so is there regulations because people are living here and here on each side? Is there some sort, I was asked that question earlier by?
Do you mean like noise and fumes and hours of operation?
Right.
It's, it's, one of the public commentators mentioned home occupation requirements and I, I think normally, although our zoning code doesn't talk to live-work spaces, but home occupation is different than a live-work. Live-work is a commercial use and a designated space. But it's also usually a passive use, so artist studio or, or furniture maker is something that doesn't involve retail or commercially open hours. So it doesn't invite the public there, it's where the person is producing their product.
And there's, and to answer the question related to the nuisance-type issues, we have nuisance sections in our municipal code that we enforce on a regular basis that relate or that relate to odor and those types of things. If you were creating something that, like, maybe you changed your business thing to have something that we were unaware of, you know, we, and we found out about it, we would be able to, you know, to look at it through that lens, meaning through a code enforcement standpoint, and as well as through the allowed uses that are in the zone, so.
Okay, no, I just, I had a business next to me that was body shop and they were painting.
Yeah.
You know, so I just didn't know how that was regulated. Okay, that's, I'm good. Have any questions, anyone else? Yes.
To follow up with that, what about the, I guess I should ask Public Works this, what about the potential of chemicals and going into the drain? And, or draining into, there isn't a drain apparently, but draining, how, how does that work with the?
Well, that's certainly something that we'd want to know about and we don't have a Utility Division Manager here who could answer questions about permitting and discharge, but there are requirements related to that. I don't have other information at that, at this time, that, but certainly if it came up, that's something we'd address.
I can probably help out a little bit there as well. We do review business licenses for businesses that go into places and depending on that type of business, if they were, you know, to have, you know, using some sort of chemicals or things like that, and we were to realize that, those business licenses would get routed to Public Works, likely out to our wastewater treatment plant because those would be things that are potentially going into the, into the drainage system, sewer system. Would also get routed to fire for their review as well. And that's, that's for any review on business licenses that we do, so.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to comments or if someone wants to entertain a motion. Anyone?
I'll comment. I'm, I'm, I mean, I think it's a, my first impression of the project was that it was great, you know, it's, it is a lot of housing which we do need, although we need less market-rate housing, more affordable housing. But when I look at it, it does, I, I see that it's, there is an argument to the fact that it's overbuilt and underparked. I, I think the parking is, is going to be a huge issue if not like a neighborhood battle that we're, that's being set up. And then I'm concerned about the drainage issue too because it doesn't seem like that's been resolved completely, it doesn't seem like the communication between Public Works and the project has been had, or I'm not understanding it if it has, but...
Is that a question for us?
Well, it, I, I mean, that's, that's my takeaway from this whole conversation.
I mean, this is no different than any other project or any other business going into, into a, into a commercial space. I mean, we, we do review them, it's a new project, we review it as part of the, when the application comes in at the planning level, we review it when the application comes in through the building, at the building permit level. Both of those instances get routed to all of the departments, including Public Works, and certainly they're able to weigh in on concerns that they might otherwise have, but there is nothing special related to this project that isn't already addressed in the conditions of approval for the project as it relates to drainage, so.
And I would just add that the deferral is, is our way of handling the drainage. So there would be drainage concerns if the frontage improvements on Marengo were put in. So by deferring them?
Right, but that doesn't seem like a very good solution to not having a plan, like, you just want to not, not improve the street because you don't know what to do with the drainage? It seems like that should be done maybe before the project is, you know, we go ahead with the project. Why, why not create the, why, it seems like we're creating another problem when we can solve it before we start the project.
Yeah, the council certainly entitled that opinion. Currently, the municipal code allows us to take that kind of action.
Okay, thank you.
I am, I'm just, my comments are, you know, I, I agree that the drainage is an issue, I've talked to residents on that street that talk about the drainage as an issue. I am subject to drainage issues because of the lack of, of, you know, attendant, attention to, to culverts and drains and things. Deed restricted, definitely requiring the improvements for the curb gutter and sidewalk, I feel wholeheartedly has to be included in there with a timeline of some sort that would be acceptable. The maintenance of the green space, the park area, whatever you want to call it, I think should be part of their landscape plan and include, I want to make sure it includes their watering it and maintaining it. I don't think the city should be watering it. Not interested in a statue being there, I'd rather see a bench or dog bags or something. I'd like to see the dead tree removed that's there, I'm not sure if that's on the property or on the city right-of-way, but since we're giving five feet half the street, I'd like that dead tree removed. I have a huge issue with the parking on Marengo and, and even more so when, when those people who buy these units are going to convert those to ADUs for income. And I'm guessing they won't be restricted to whether or not they can be vacation rentals because of the zoning there. And that's all I have for right now.
Mayor, I'd, I'd like to make a motion to uphold the appeal.
Have a motion on the floor, is there a second? There is no second, so the motion is going to die for lack of second. I will see, does someone want to make a motion or continue conversation, discussion?
Could make a motion at this point with some conditions that we've discussed. Let me give it a go. Motion to approve Resolution 1323 to approve the condition use permit, the coastal development permit and the vesting tentative track map together with approval. Am I on the wrong one? Dang it! See? See how it is? All right. Motion to recommend the adoption of Resolution Number 60-23, denying the appeal and upholding the Planning Commission approval of the coastal development permit, CDP 22-004, conditional use permit, CUP 22-06, and TTM 22-04, for the proposed tentative map and new mixed-use project to be located 1140 Alessandro Avenue with the following conditions. With respect to the, to the deferral, a time limit of two years. And I'd like to add, if we can have Public Works follow up to look into implementing no parking on Marengo Street.
Anything else?
That's it.
Would, would you include the maintenance of the landscape, by their landscape plan, including the water? So that they're watering the? The landscape area, yeah.
It seemed to me, if I understood the presentation and what I saw at Planning Commission and what Mr. Lur offered tonight, that there was that type of offering on the table to take care of that area.
I just want to make sure it includes the water.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
Which one? There were three options.
I think we heard garden at some point, didn't we? We, we heard, sorry, we did hear...
The landscape.
I know, can we, can we place it as landscaping because we don't know if that would be a cooperative garden? I mean, there, it seems like that's a conceptual thing and not really on the table here yet.
To include watering, though?
Yes.
Okay.
And so how is the drainage addressed in, in this?
So the Public Works Department, as part of that, would evaluate drainage if, if we had that timeline for two years and we performed that evaluation beforehand.
How about motion, are you complete with the motion? Can I get a second?
I'll second that motion.
Continue discussion, thank you. I needed a second, sorry. I had a motion on the floor. Any other discussion? Can I ask for a roll call vote, please?
Mayor, if I could interject, if the council wanted to add these two conditions, it would be preferable if Community Development Director had an opportunity to ask the developer whether or not he would agree to those on the record and so we would have a clean decision. And if he wouldn't agree to it, then we can discuss what we would do at that point.
Okay.
Okay, well, I'd suggest we take a five-minute break and...
Thank you.
Okay.
How about a three-minute break?
Sure.
Thank you, we're running late.
Okay.
Thank you. We're back, everybody can take a seat, please, thank you. Mr. Newmeyer?
Madam Mayor, Community Development...
Sorry.
Sure. Community Development Director Graham and I, we spoke with the developer and he indicated to us that he'd be willing on the record to say that he would be able to agree to what the council is requesting now, but I'll let him give his piece. He, he could invite him back to the podium. And then I would suggest that, based on that, understanding that community development in my office, we will revise this resolution and bring it back on consent for the next meeting with those conditions. So I'd like to, if the mayor commission invite the...
Thank you, Mr. Lur.
And also, technically speaking, we're going to reopen the public hearing just to allow him to speak and I would suggest you give an opportunity to the appellant?
Yes, thank you.
A few minutes, thank you.
Okay, I'll, I can agree to a two-year deferment. I would prefer a 10-year deferment or a deferment to the development of the adjacent property, basically because the cost of putting the landscaping in? of putting the landscaping in for two, and then to pull it out in two years, because all of that's going to get removed. All of that through to the radius of the property line, so that whole corner where all that, where the community garden's going in will all get removed if those, as soon as those improvements go in. So I hope, you know, that's, you know, I hope you guys understand what that means. So, you know, all of that, the community garden, the benefit is, will get removed as soon as those improvements go in, because it'll be basically wrapping around the radius of the property line. So, so I'd like to keep this moving forward-
Thank you.
If at all possible. So, thank you.
But to be clear, sir, so I mean, even, even though you think there's better options, you're okay with these two conditions if that's the way to keep the project moving forward, is the two-year deferral and the maintenance of the landscaping?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yep.
I, I think that Mr. Lora makes a good point. If you're going to have to rip out stuff and fix it because of drainage and sidewalk improvements, why would you not do it now than cause him the extra cost later on? It seems more common sense to do it now rather than to defer it. And of course, he would ask for 10 years because he'll be gone by then, and in two years, he may still be working on the project. And at that point, it should just be done now, so it's all taken care of. So you know what's going on in the soils report, you know what's going on in the drainage report, you know what's going on in the public improvements.
Thank you. With that, I will close public comment. If we have a motion and a second, are we going to withdraw that then, Mr. Newmeyer?
Yes, and, well, actually, the motion would be passed, and then the resolution for its actual approval would be brought back on consent.
Thank you. Thank you for clarification. Can I ask a question, please, real quick? We have a motion and a second on the floor. To the question of the landscape plan, can it be modified to something simplistic that would be, you know, drought tolerant, juniper bushes, whatever? I'm not looking at micromanaging.
Yes, Mayor, that's the conversation that we were having up here, and why it took more than three minutes.
So, okay.
Yes.
10 minutes. Okay, so there are some options that can be, where they're not investing a large amount of money for that.
Yes.
Thank you. Perfect. So there's a motion and a second on the floor, and I will ask the city clerk for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Landrum?
No.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
And Mayor Wickson?
Yes.
Motion carries for one.
Thank you for your time. Thank you, Ms. Hubbard. With that, we're going to move on to Item C1, and I'm turning this over to Ms. Kimball or Ms. Munson?
Mayor, before we start this item, I, out of respect for public perception, I'm going to be abstaining from this discussion and vote, and I trust that you all will make a great decision here.
Thank you. With that-
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We are here tonight to certify the results of a citizens' initiative. You can't hear me. And determine the next steps. For a little background, on August 9th, an initiative petition seeking to prohibit, unless otherwise approved by a majority of Morro Bay voters, any change to the land use designations under Plan Morro Bay, visitors serving commercial and/or commercial recreational fishing on certain designated parcels, was filed with the clerk's office. Upon a cursory review, it was determined that the petitions contained more than, signatures of more than 10% of the city's registered voters, and it was accepted for filing. We coordinated with Slo County Register of Voters and went through a signature verification process, which was completed on August 31st. The proponents were then notified that the petition was deemed sufficient with 1,327 signatures. The Elections Code requires, once that, once that occurs, that the elections official certify the results to the council, to the legislative body at the next regular meeting. So here we are. This is the map that was provided by the proponents. It's an exhibit in the ordinance that they have put forward. The affected areas are outlined in red. In this presentation, you're going to hear a lot of reference to Elections Code and state law, and I just want to point that out. It might seem a little boring or redundant, but the process is really established by the state, and the city is required to follow those procedures. So, required next steps. The Elections Code, Section 9215, requires the council to take one of the following actions at tonight's meeting. You have the option to order a report on the effects of the proposed measure, which would be presented within 30 days. You can adopt the ordinance without alteration at this meeting or within 10 days after it's presented, or you can submit the ordinance without alteration to the voters at the next regular election, which would be the November 2024 election. And that is actually per the Morro Bay Municipal Code, which establishes the city's regular general election. It occurs on the same day as the statewide general election in November of every even-numbered year. Any other election date would be considered a special election. I'll go into each of those in a little bit more detail. Option one, that's provided for the council, would be pursuant to Elections Code 9212. A report on the effects of the proposed initiative could consider any, some, or all of the following items. Its fiscal impact, its effect on the internal consistency of the city's general and specific plans, including the housing element, effect on the use of land, availability and location of housing, potential funding for infrastructure improvements, the community's ability to attract and retain business and employment, uses of vacant parcels of land, agricultural lands, open space, traffic congestion, existing business districts, developed areas designated for revitalization, and any other matters the legislative body requests be in the report. That report, again, is required to be presented to the council within 30 days. So if ordered, it would be brought back at the October 10th meeting. I want to point out that if the council were to order that report, staff request that the council specify the desired items that be included. Elections Code 1405 requires that when the report is presented to council, the council shall either adopt the ordinance within 10 days or order an election. We have examined, based on, you know, community questions, whether that can be extended, and do not find any alternative within state law to extend that decision point beyond October 10th. Second option is to adopt the ordinance as presented. The ordinance is provided in the staff report as, as Attachment 4. I, I won't read that for you. If that's of interest, it's, it's motion-ready in the staff report. And the last one is Option 3, to order an election on the proposed ordinance. We provided three resolutions that would accomplish that and place the item on the November 5th, 2024 ballot. You would adopt Resolution 6123, calling the election. Resolution 6223, establishing deadlines for written arguments and directing the city attorney to prepare an impartial analysis. One quick note on that item, the Elections Code allows the council to prepare arguments opposing the ordinance. The proponents would prepare the arguments in favor. The council could, if they wish, prepare arguments against. If you wish to do that, then there's a section in Resolution 6223 where we ask that you would name the members that are going to prepare that, those arguments. If you choose not to do that, then we would strike Section 2 of Resolution 6223. The one quick note, if, if that motion were to occur, just, we need clarification on that piece. And then lastly, you would consider the adoption of 6323, which provides for filing of rebuttal arguments. That is not a requirement, it's optional. The direct cost to add the ballot measure to the general election, not including staff time or legal fees, would be $4,000 to $5,000. The question has been raised, why not March 2024 instead of waiting all the way till November? That is based on Elections Code 1405, which provides in part that a, an initiative that qualifies shall be held at the jurisdiction's next regular election occurring not less than 88 days after the order of the election. The governing body does have the ability to call a special election, but that special election shall be held not less than 88 days or more than 103 days after the order of the election. So looking at that timeline, if the election were ordered today, that election would have to occur between December 9th and 24th. If the council were to order a 30-day report, that would come back on October 10th, and an election, a special election called on that date would have to occur between January 6th and 21st. I'll just insert there that I did reach out to the county clerk's office to see if they would be willing to conduct a special election on the city's behalf in that timeframe, and they respectfully declined. Their office is preparing for the March primary, and they are not able to take on any additional elections. The timeframe, just so that we're all clear, to place this item on the March 5th statewide primary would require that the election be called between November 23rd and December 8th. Back to the special election option, if a special election were called in the January timeframe, that would require the city to conduct a standalone special election. It's an extremely short timeframe to successfully administer a standalone election. Would not be possible with in-house staff. Uncertain whether there are professional elections consultants or other vendors available and that could be retained in time to assist and support a standalone election. And lastly, prohibitive costs, the estimated costs for those items there is between $140,000 and $160,000. For those reasons, staff does not recommend the council pursue this alternative. So in conclusion, you have three options before you. Order the report per Elections Code 9212, and provide direction as to which specific items you would want to be included. Adopt the ordinance as presented, or send the ordinance to the voters by adopting the three resolutions presented. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and I'm sure Mr. Newmeyer will have an opportunity to weigh in as well.
Thank you very much, Ms. Munson. I appreciate that. Is there anything at this point, Mr. Newmeyer, that you want to add before we start questions?
No, Madam Mayor, but I'm available for questions.
Thank you for, for that. Ms. Kimball, you wanted to defer a question from earlier to Chief McCray regarding the question asked by the audience earlier?
Right. It's, I, I think so, Mayor. Yeah, let's, let's, let the discussion take place, and then Chief is ready to-
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions, staff? Councilmember Edwards? Councilmember Barton, questions? Yes, it is. Want some time? Councilmember Landrum, questions for staff? No? Before we open public comment, I'm going to ask council, we're at 9:20 right now, so I need approval for us to go past 9:30 to hear this item through. Do I have consensus? Yes, yes, yes. Thank you. Well, we'll try to stop by 10 o'clock. Thank you. With that, I will open public comment on Item C1. I have three speaker slips to start with. Casey Cordes and Walter Heath, followed by Rachel Wilson.
Good evening, Mayor, oh, excuse me. Good evening, Mayor Wickson and esteemed council members. My name is Casey Cordes. I have been living in Morro Bay for seven years. This is a big decision. A portion of the electorate has already spoken, and I trust that eventually you will send this initiative to the general election and allow the rest of the electorate to make the final call. But to that end, I'm here to urge the council to request a report on the impact of this initiative. Should it pass, obviously. Specifically, as we saw, the Election Code 9212 offers that you may request a report based on its impact on the community's ability to attract and retain business and employment, its impact on the uses of vacant parcels of land, its impact on agricultural lands, open space, traffic congestion, and then obviously any other matters. I mean, you could request a report on how this may affect the future maintenance of the existing facility on-site. This is within your power to request. I've met with many members of the city staff over the years, and I have great faith in their ability to illuminate both sides of a decision like this. Once we have their input, I think the council should then send that report with this vote to the voters. With a nuanced view of the impact it might have, I think we can find our way to the best outcome. But I don't think that currently we have that nuanced view in the public discourse that's going on. So I think this is a great opportunity for you to take that leadership position. To speak to the future decision in general, I think voicing your opinion is not only our right, but it's, it's our duty as citizens. However, tying the hands of our elected officials and limiting the power of our representatives to negotiate on our behalf, it's almost certainly not the best way to operate a city like ours. If we pass this measure, if we, you know, leave this decision to the voters in the future, we will be announcing to private industry that no one in this city can negotiate in good faith. We will be giving state regulators the nod. We'll be telling them they have to act on our behalf because we can't present a united front. I think the result will be less local control over the future of our city, and then not more. As I see it, this will only lead to worse outcomes for us. We need to empower our council, yourselves, our elected leaders, with the support of your constituents. We need leadership that weighs the pragmatic with the prudent. So I hope that you'll request that report, and I hope that you will send this to a general election. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Walter Heath, resident of Morro Bay. Thanks for the opportunity to speak this evening, and I want to also thank you for the extraordinary gift of time and energy that you give on behalf of all of us. It's really appreciated. You know, I'm skeptical about the safety of the proposed battery storage facility, and I'm grateful to the citizens for Estero Bay Preservation for raising awareness on the matter. I understand why residents are concerned, troubled, and angry. I mean, you know, many of us, me included, have moments of feeling helpless and just kind of wishing that this would go away. But it isn't, and, and I would urge my fellow community members to trust the deliberative process, right? If you ever sat down with your election booklet and read the array of propositions and stuff, you'll understand why we don't govern by the initiative process. You got to trust the deliberative process. And I was looking around at the group tonight, I mean, I'm just thinking, boy, what a potential for this community organization. And you know my personal history on, on that front. We would be in a much more advantaged and empowered position if, as a community organization united, we continue to educate and organize right now. Because this battery storage situation is fluid, and there are way more differences than there are similarities to William Brothers, Williams Brothers wanting to put a shopping center on the east side of Highway 1. It's, it's, it's- center on the east side of Highway One. There's no comparison dealing with this situation and how quickly things will change. I'm speaking from experience, and I will tell you that many times over the course of ten years while we were trying to convince this community to do the right thing so that we wouldn't be showering and doing our business in tents right now, the message was, trust the process. I was told it many times, I said it many times, anyone who was involved, that small group of determined people, said, trust the process. And that was ten years and seven elections. So I'm just saying, speaking from experience, I think this group, Citizens for Astero Bay Preservation, would do much better because opportunities will present themselves during this journey, and we will be grateful if we invest time and energy in organizing and unifying instead of aligning with pro and con positions on an initiative that probably will have no effect. So I'm willing to join, you know, I'm willing to consult, I'm willing to advise. A group of people came to me in twenty-twelve and said, how do we do this? Can you help us? And they were amazing. And honestly, we came within seventy days of doing our business in tents set up by FEMA.
There should be a PowerPoint. Good evening, Madam Chairman and members of the Morro Bay City Council. My name is Rachel Wilson, and we are here to celebrate an initiative that supports the values of your Morro Bay citizens. I am part of Citizens for the Preservation of Astero Bay. Next slide, please. Your constituents told us time and time again that Morro Bay really values three things. We want a safe environment. We want a strong and vibrant tourist and fishing industry. We have a world-class waterfront and embarkaderos that we want to expand and make better. No one I talked to said they wanted a best plant. Next, please. In less than ten weeks, we had one thousand three hundred and twenty-seven verified signatures. Only eight hundred and fifteen signatures were needed. We had a hundred and sixty-three percent. Next slide, please. Our initiative preserves our brand as a tourist industry, gives our citizens a vote. Those four areas outlined in red, they would maintain their current planned Morro Bay status as visitors serving commercial or commercial recreational fishing. These designations could only be changed by a vote of the people. Next slide, please. Our plan affirms Plan Morro Bay, which was approved by the California Coastal Commission. Next slide, please. Want to change the land use designation to light industrial? I've heard, oh, no, we can't do that. Projected projects can still go through the existing planning process, a planning department, a planning commission, public hearings, the city council. Everyone can hear it, it's just that the final say will not be with the city council, it will be with the people. Because of that, there will be more public hearings and more public input. It will prevent the back-room deals, which created the MOU that got us into this problem in the first place with a billion-dollar Fortune 500 company. Next, please. This project, if it's visitors serving commercial, there's no change in the planning process. Planning department, planning commission, public hearings, and the city council will make the final decision. An interesting fact, tourism brings in two-point-one-five billion dollars into San Luis Obispo County, and seven-point-four-seven million visitors who come to this county each year. Want to make twenty-one and a half million dollars per year? Design an embankadero that will entice only one percent of these tourists to visit Morro Bay. Next slide, please. Design an embankadero that is the jewel of the coast. As somebody say, turn right to the rock. Get our tourists here. Thank you.
I have no more speaker slips, public comment is open.
Madam Mayor, Terry Simons. I wasn't planning on speaking on this until I heard Mr. Heath's comments about the regulation of our community by a council versus initiative. And I would point out that the most aggressive, and in my opinion egregious, initiative that regulates our community is that initiative which established the Coastal Commission. If you look at every planning decision, every local coastal plan, every issue that comes before this council generally has to be ratified by the Coastal Commission. The Coastal Commission is an initiative-based body. It was driven by the vote of the people of California to create that commission, and they will have final say. They will have final say on whatever happens on the Vistra property. If the California Energy Commission determines that they are going to override anything that the city of Morro Bay does, if you read into the depths of the California Energy Commission's regulations regarding their ability to override local jurisdiction, they have that, but guess what? Their decision has to ultimately go to the Coastal Commission. So when you say that the initiative process is something that should be avoided, I think that's fundamentally wrong. We live under the initiative process right now. We live under the Coastal Commission. I don't see how having a very small portion of our community extra-regulated by an initiative is going to hurt our community.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, new city manager, Barry Brandon, Morro Bay. Why are we here? We're here because of corporate greed. We're here because a billion-dollar corporation wants to use a distressed property they acquired at a fire sale to install three Costco-sized buildings, each with two-hundred megawatts of lithium batteries. We are here because that billion-dollar company would not help our town solve a problem forced upon us when the regional water quality board said, move the sewer plant. To satisfy the water board, Morro Bay needed to an easement for a main sewer line that ran across the corner of this billion-dollar corporation's property. In order to get that sewer easement, the billion-dollar corporation said, you must help us get the permits for the world's largest lithium battery storage facility. Morro Bay government was caught between a rock and a hard place. If it did not get the easement, the project would be delayed. Delaying getting the new sewer plant online by the spring of twenty-twenty-three would bring fines of thousands of dollars a day. To get the needed easement, the billion-dollar corporation required the city to sign a memorandum of understanding, which would require the city to facilitate the massive battery project. We are here because the voters of Morro Bay had spent hours and hours of city staff time and hours and hours of Coastal Commission staff time to develop a general plan of the land use our town is required to do by law. This was completed in twenty-twenty-one. We're here tonight to defend the land use that was determined for the dormant power plant that is in the center of our revenue-producing tourist district. We want the land use, as affirmed by the Coastal Commission, as visitors serving commercial, to remain similar to the area around it. In ten weeks, our volunteers got over sixty percent of more signatures than necessary to put the issue on the ballot. Let the voters decide if the land use stays the same instead of a billion-dollar corporation. Please choose to allow the voters and your constituents to have their voices heard. Please approve to put the initiative on the next ballot. Thank you.
No clapping, no clapping, just wait, please, thank you, it's very late.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, thank you for your time and your service. My name is Lee Johnson, I'm a resident of Morro Bay. Had a thirty-year career in business, with ten of those years being devoted to economic development at the city level. I've seen my share of large development projects, each one has gone through a rigorous public process that moves step by step through the city's departments and advisory boards, and when necessary goes in front of the city council for a decision. This is a proven process for how cities manage development, which encourages good projects to come forward with many opportunities for public input. However, the proponents of this initiative don't believe in that process. They don't trust a process that every city in California uses to ensure that residents' voices are heard, all issues are considered, and the community benefits from the project. What the proponents of the initiative would have us believe is that Santa Claus and Walt Disney are going to come to Morro Bay to develop a gigantic visitor-serving project on a polluted brownfield site. The mythical project will solve our economic issues and address the huge liability of the contaminated site, the abandoned power plant, and the related aging infrastructure like the stacks. Considering the outcry about the proposed Vistra project and every other project, can we believe that these same proponents will support any project at all, ever? Can we even believe that they won't continue to use disinformation and distortion to stop any project that will contribute to the viability of our city? Let's live in reality. I can tell you with confidence that no developer will propose a project in the city that deviates so far from the normal process and will be subject to the tactics that have been used so far. Their money and their projects will go elsewhere. What this initiative risks is that Morro Bay will end up with the battery plant anyway and without any revenue or public benefit to the city. Without ongoing new revenue in the next few years, services like police, fire, our public infrastructure will be unsustainable. If you don't believe me, watch the April fifth goal-setting meeting and listen to the budget information beginning at the ten-minute mark in the meeting. To have a fair, fact-based, and informed discussion, our community needs the report as outlined in the staff report. In addition to the items listed on page two-eighty-eight, the council should direct staff to report on the state and federal clean energy initiatives like AB two-oh-five that may impact a proposed battery plant or similar projects. Option two is not really an option. After the report is prepared and presented, option three is the appropriate next step to determine the future viability of our city. We should also include the opportunity for rebuttal arguments by council and/or the public. A quick note on AB two-oh-five, if we don't follow our normal process, that makes it much easier for Vistra to use AB two-oh-five. If we follow the standard city processes, even with a denial, it makes that harder for them to go to AB two-oh-five. Thank you very much, and I appreciate your time and service.
Hi, my name is Betsy Gardett-Cross, I'm a Morro Bay resident. I wasn't really planning on speaking, but I had a couple of things I want to share. First of all, I disagree with the last speaker, obviously. I feel that if we listed the property out in the world, there would be multiple billion-dollar corporations that would see this gorgeous iconic location, and they would jump on it and want to develop it. But speaking to the citizens, I heard very few people, when I was going out collecting signatures, talking to the people, passing out signs and T-shirts and whatever, I heard very few people say that they were in favor of having the best there. Everyone thought that it was a bad idea that I spoke to, with the exception of one or two. I'm concerned with the city council members possibly being influenced by big corporations, rich companies, I mean, not you personally, but I just know that it happens, it can happen. And that's why I feel strongly that something of this magnitude that is this important needs to be decided by the citizens, who will be impacted in years to come. And in ten years, when we have developed another way of generating energy, or ten years, fifteen years, whenever it's going to happen, because I know it is, I mean, they're already working on a different kind of battery, what are we going to do with those three ugly buildings? I mean, then we'll have to tear those down, too. It just won't happen. I want to see something put there that would encourage tourism and not discourage it. I don't want to be known as Batteries by the Bay. I want to be known for this, what I picture as a cute little fishing village. I know some people disagree with that scenario, but for me, coming from the San Joaquin Valley, it is a cute little fishing village, and I want it to stay that way. I want tourism to grow, I want people to come to support the city and enjoy what we have to offer. Anyway, I appreciate your time and effort in letting me speak, thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I won't mention my name because some people have been threatened with lawsuits, but I do live in Morro Bay. And I wasn't going to speak tonight either, but I'm so angry at some of the misinformation that's been given here by a couple of the speakers that I am going to speak. The people have spoken on this, and they've given strong support on this initiative. It was easy to collect the signatures, I went out, too, and collected them. There was hardly anybody that was opposed to it. Someone was saying, trust the process. How about trust the people? The people spoke on this, that's what we need to trust. The process was broken when, by the previous administration, when they made these back-room deals that were kind of, they were an open secret, but, you know, I was totally surprised to find out that this was going on about eight months ago. Big politics and big government have brought us to this point. The rigorous process will still be in place. We're not changing the process, we're only changing the ability to change the zones. That's what we're changing. The process will still be in place, and the people should be able to vote on this. Let's see, the fire department, they don't, they don't want this. I mean, I'm sorry, I'm probably speaking for you, but, you know, they don't want to fight these lithium battery fires. I have some experience with my employer, which I won't mention, but they are nasty fires, and if you just look on the internet, you'll see how nasty they are with the buses that burn up. Imagine a thousand Teslas parked right there in our city that catch on fire, and the fire department has to go out and fight that. My understanding is there won't be anybody from Vistra working here, they don't care about us, you know? The load will be on us, our fire department has to fight it, we have to live with the toxic fumes. Are we going to sound the nuclear alarm when this thing catches on fire? Is that the plan? And then everybody goes in their homes, oh, stay in your home for six hours, like the fire up north at Moss Landings where they shut the freeway down for six miles. This is outrageous, in my opinion. I'm sorry, I get a little excited. I hope, I hope I'm not coming across as overbearing here, but you should approve this now. There's no point in more studies? Come on. The people have spoken, we need to approve this, and then people can start planning on how they're going to act with the business guy that talked. If he wants to change the zoning, he can start figuring out how he's going to convince the people to change the zoning. I'm almost done. Someone said that we don't need this battery storage facility for the turbines, that's very true, I'm glad they said that. It can be put anywhere, it should not be in our city.
Thank you.
I'm done.
Hello, good evening, Mayor, City Council, staff, and chiefs. What I was going to say, most people have already said, I think that, for me, it's not even a matter of not trusting or not believing in the process, but that at this point, the process has been corrupted, and this city council's hands are tied, they are bound by an MOU that was signed with Vistra, that the city is required to cooperate with and assist the Vistra Corporation in bringing the best here. And it is my understanding, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that if this city council should... council should vote, let's say, to deny zoning, that they would potentially be opening themselves to litigation for breach of that MOU. Furthermore, you know, one of the things in the MOU, it's really fascinating. People talk about it being contaminated. You can never do anything with it. It's a brownfield. And in this very MOU that people are talking about, which is from June 2021, it says that it is believed that remediation costs necessary to remediate the site to the level where non-industrial uses could be considered are in the multimillion-dollar range. Multi-million dollars. That's not all that much. We're talking about a billion-dollar property out there on the coast of California. Meanwhile, they've estimated that in $2,014, it would be $30 million to take down the plant that's there. So, just saying that. I did research a little bit about brownfields, and I'm sure some of you know a lot more about it. This is just what I found on a very quick scale, that Vistra, the city, could have help in remediating it. The EPA has free technical assistance with brownfields and land revitalization, just exactly what we're talking about. And also, the State Water and Lands Commission also has grants and help for remediating brownfields in a way that would bring in economic development. I mean, we just, this is a gem that we have right here in our hands, and I'm going to do everything in my power to protect it. And thank you for listening and for doing what you can, and do a report, don't do a report, but I think if you do do a report, I'd love to get more information on the brownfield and what that would actually take to remediate it. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Bill Martini again. Just wanted to, a couple of quick comments is, first off, I think this is so important that the people should make, you know, take it to the vote of the people, and it should be a decision that should be citywide. As far as a report or not a report for 30 days, I think that's your option. But when you're talking about a brownfield, you're talking about recycling your water right next to this. I think we should find out if there is pollution on this site, what the cost to clean it up. I think I read two weeks ago in Sunday Paper, an article where, maybe it was Scott, said it costs $50 million to remediate the site or take the plant down. When I was at the Vistra meeting, when they, you know, as far as to the public, I asked one of the Vistra representatives, I said, "What would it take to remove the three stacks, cost-wise?" And she said, "They have a machine now that starts at the top of the stack, grinds it, it goes inside, and then, you know, the grinding of the cement, and then they can either haul it away or leave it in the basis stack." $1 million per stack. $3 million to remove the three stacks. I said, "What does it cost to remediate the asbestos in the main plant?" Because that's your main issue. She said, "1 million dollars." So when you're talking 50 million, you're talking 4 million to remediate the asbestos and remove the three smokestacks. So if the other 46 million has to do with what's polluted in the ground, we need to actually find out where the pollution is, if there's a problem or if there's not a problem, because originally, that area out there was just fuel. You know, it was your fuel tank. So if that's in the ground, or if there's any pollution, you're talking about recycling your water in the same ground basin. So there's, you need to figure out the pollution, because if you're going to recycle your water and you're pumping it out of a polluted ground basin, you've got a big problem. So I think in any study, let's figure out if that ground is truly polluted, or if it's just taken and remediating the plant and taking down the stacks, you're talking 4 million. Thank you.
I'll be fairly brief on two topics. One is the idea about the initiative is not part of the normal process, and it is. It's something that's been in California forever. We've also used it at the local level forever, and so that is part of the normal process. The other comment I want to make is, the people are about safety. This is an issue of safety. It's not about money. And to, even if you order the study, you're still going to come back to the same place where you still have to put it on the ballot. So I'm not sure why you're asking to use staff time, which is using up more money, to do a study. You're going to end up in the same place. And I think that the people that are asking for the study are looking for evidence of why this is a bad idea. But those will be economic reasons. They won't be safety reasons, and the people will still vote for safety. Thank you.
Mayor, council ladies, and staff, my name is Karen Aguilar. I wasn't really going to talk, except that I just wanted to say that the only reason why this is becoming a contentious situation is because people are calling other people out for that. I still, to this day, don't understand what the word "disinformation" means. I think it comes out of some book, but it's certainly not the Webster's Dictionary. That said, the reason why this initiative came out was because there was clear evidence of back-room deals that happened at the previous administration, and I think our last election was a referendum of what was going on. And by extension, we went out to gather signatures. And like what Betsy talked about, we talked to a lot of people in the community, and I didn't know anybody who said that they thought it was a great idea. So if there are people out there who think it was, that they think it's a great idea, let them vote at the ballot. Let's let the people of the Morro Bay decide what we're going to do with this, okay? So I would ask that you consider deciding tonight to put this on the ballot. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Jamie Irons, resident of Morro Bay. We urge you to adopt recommendation number one: Order a report on the effects of the proposed ordinance as described in the staff report with the following addition. Direct the city attorney to provide a legal analysis of AB 205 as it relates to the proposed battery energy storage system project and the proposed initiative. The legislature designates Elections Code Section 9212 to better inform the electric and the legislative body about proposed initiatives. Given the report must be presented within 30 days, and staff has indicated it could be brought to council in the community by October 10, 2023, this seems like a reasonable step, given the significance of the issue. The proposed initiative has been entwined in a highly emotional discussion of a proposed battery storage facility. We deserve to know whether it would stop that or not, and we deserve to consider the impacts of having land use designated at the hands of voters every time we want to consider something, or at the hands of our elected officials, and know how the position of the city in the future negotiations with potential developers. Order the report and make an informed decision on October 10, when the report returns, to consider placing the initiative on the November 5, 2024 election. The cost of a special election is not justifiable. Thank you. And also, part of this, you know, when we talk about the different things that we hear, Mr. Martini was referring to $1 million for this. We don't really know that. I would caution that. As a former employee there, we went through discussions on what it would cost, and at the time, it was $125 million to demolish the plant. The numbers, I know there's newer technologies and stuff, but those numbers are elusive, and I would just put a word of caution to everybody, bring all this back as requested, and we'll have that discussion, and the vote of the people will take place. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Good evening again, mayor and council. Lynda Donnelly. So I just want to thank the thousands of people, well, 1,500 approximately, that signed this initiative. And I don't think I've ever walked an easier initiative or gotten signatures. I didn't have to say anything. They knew what we were there for, and they, these 1,500 people approximately that signed this initiative, they know the risks. They don't want to battery a bomb, a potential bomb in our front yard. I mean, they have also done their homework. That's why they signed this petition. And I just want to say thank you to all those people that did sign it. I want to say thank you to the people that walked it, that stood at Farmer's Market week after week after week. And as far as the plan Morro Bay or this document that the Coastal Commission solidified as far as a, it's getting late and I haven't eaten. So to keep the zoning, commercial visitor-serving, I don't think I've ever wanted to thank, I think it's the heading administration for anything else, you know? I mean, really. So I just would urge the council tonight to put this to a vote of the people at their earliest possible election cycle, a vote, and thank you. Good evening.
Anyone else? And I'm going to ask you, please, to keep it brief, or we're going to call the meeting, and there isn't going to be a decision tonight because it's already 10 o'clock.
Yeah, I realize that. We haven't either. Paul Donnelly, again, you know, the matter before you is whether or not to have this report done, which really not going to tell you anything. You already know the answer. It's just the time that you finally get the people to speak. When Barry brought up the water regulation for the city, we were never asked. We were asked whether or not we wanted to pay for it, and a lot of people said no. And it was not directed to be moved by the regional board. The regional board just says comply with the order. This is the time where I call, when we have a vote, the "we, the people" moment, and I wanted to read something real quick for you. It says that "to secure these rights, governments are instituted among men deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed." We're the governed. You need our consent. It's about time you started asking us before you do these crazy things. So please, let us vote on this thing as soon as possible. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? AGP?
Thank you, Mayor Wixom. There are two hands raised in the queue. Rocky and Setting, I'm allowing you to talk.
Hello, this is actually Judy Setti. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Judy.
Thank you.
We're trying to keep it short so we can make a decision tonight. Thank you.
Okay. So I heard corruption, and I just want to say that my research into the MOU that was signed, the Vistra MOU in 2021, showed that the appraiser said they could not give a true value of the property to us without a site assessment being done and a cost of remediation for the site. Our city staff chose not to do that, and therefore, they took the appraisal of under $9 million for a hundred, just less than 100 acres of waterfront prime property, without really knowing the true cost of remediation. I then talked with the project manager at the Department of Toxic Substance Control, and I'd like to read, after asking her, "Why isn't PG&E being held liable for cleanup? How is it that they can just leave us with this toxic mess?" And ultimately, she sent this response to me. Regarding your question, PG&E is not held liable for cleaning up the soil to its original state. As you mentioned, Morro Bay's general plan has designated the land use as visitor-serving commercial. DTSC does not have the authority to direct PG&E to clean up the land to a residential level when it is zoned commercial use. Additionally, we do not have the authority to compel the city of Morro Bay to change the zoning from commercial to residential. DTSC's responsibility is to ensure that the chosen remedy is protective of human health and the environment in the short and long term. We do not mandate that everything be cleaned up to its original condition. If the city of Morro Bay decides to change the zoning to residential, then DTSC can potentially utilize the CACA to request that PG&E clean up to a residential level. So I read that and thought, okay, the zoning would allow us to get PG&E to take care of their responsibility.
Thank you, Judy.
Okay.
Thank you. AGP, is there anyone else?
Yes, Jeff Echols, I'm allowing you to talk.
Good evening.
Hi, Jeff.
Very good. Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members and staff. I thank you, grateful for the service that you all provide to making our community a better place. It's late, I'm going to be very brief. I've heard a lot spoken to tonight about process and AB 205. Bottom line, however, is that you've got three options in front of you. Some of these three items very briefly. With regard to process, there was plenty of process. There were years of public input, deliberation, that the city council then voted on approving the general plan, which gave that property down there a zoning designation. That zoning designation was visitor-serving commercial. So there's no need to do this study. The studies have already been done. The city council approved that in May of 2021. Interestingly enough, when we talk about process, in June of 2021, a mere 30 days later, the city council approved an MOU in contradiction to their own general plan. So that's an area where process was lacking. With regard to AB 205, which is basically fast-track permitting for energy and energy storage projects, you know what, folks? You need to read this. AB 205 mandates a statute, a community benefit agreement. So the public, nor the city, is going to be sidestepped if AB 205 is enacted or empowered by the applicant. In fact, they will be required to provide a CBA, a community benefit agreement. Lastly, and I'll finish up here, with those three options that are in front of you, we don't need a report. Again, there were years of deliberation and study done with regard to the general plan. We just need to get this on the ballot at the next regular election with the least amount of cost, and citizens will work it out. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. AGP, anyone else?
There are no more raised hands in the queue.
Thank you. With that, I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to council. I know it's late, but I have been advised by our legal counsel that we are required to make a decision tonight, based on the Election Code. So we will continue. Hopefully, we can get through this, because I know we're all tired, because we've been doing this for seven hours today. Questions for staff?
I'd like to ask, if it's possible, do we have to choose one of these or could we choose two of these?
So the option is to either ask for a report and then decide whether the ordinance goes to the voters or you adopt it. Or tonight, you either adopt the ordinance or send it to the voters. So no, you can't pick two of the three.
I have to tell you, I came here tonight, first of all, probably before I go there, I came here tonight with a lot of admiration for the citizens that took the time, the energy, and the effort to go out there and walk and do the talk and really express their views as they see them with the research that they have done. And to get, you know, the amount of signatures that you did is quite commendable and does represent clearly a part of our population, of our community, that believes in this initiative as presented. I have to tell you, after hearing public comment, I actually have more questions than I did before coming here tonight. And many of those questions range from everything, from, you know, me personally not having much information on backdoor deals, not really hearing some of the information that I heard tonight ever before. And I'm just speaking my truth, right? That's what I come to this moment with, right? I don't have some of the history that some of you do or knowledge, and I look to staff for that. I look to Advisory Board members for answers to questions and thoughts and expertise. I look to past council members for their, you know, experience and their knowledge and their continuity that I quite frankly don't have when you're new and nine months in here. And this is not an easy job up here to represent an entire community and to do the amount of research that the five of us, Councilmember Ford not being here, but also the five of us, do day in and day out and research. And I tell you, I get up in the middle of the night sometimes jotting on my steno pad because I've got something else that's popped into my head that I feel is important for me to convey either to the community in this forum or in some other educational forum. Those of you that know me know that I'm about education, know that I'm about research, that I don't like to have no stone unturned. And so I have more questions now than I did before. And so for me, I don't know how else to get those questions answered than to have a staff report that would allow for me to get some of those answers. And I can't be the only one, if I'm up here representing my constituents, which I see as the entire community, I truly cannot be the only one who doesn't, you know, know everything. You know, I'm privy to more information than anyone else in this community, in my opinion, because of the things that I just mentioned. And I just, in my heart, feel, as much as I absolutely commend the efforts made by this initiative and how I feel about, you know, the vote tonight, I still am clinging on to the fact that the greater community deserves to have the information and the questions that you yourselves brought up tonight. And I don't know any other way to get that to them, to provide guidelines for them to I'm going to leave it right there.
Anyone else for comments? Are you looking to make a motion?
I was waiting to see if there's any comments discussion.
I can make a comment. I also thank the community for coming out. It's really impressive to see the amount of people that are here tonight, and I hope you keep coming. I will say that I, having myself walked the town while I was campaigning, this issue came up, and I'm not surprised that there was, there were so many signatures and that it was so easy to get the signatures because that is the feedback that I got while I was campaigning from literally everyone I talked to. So I believe that it was an easy, easy thing to do. I think it's unfortunate that the community feels the way that they do and they feel that they can't trust the Counsel. It's unfortunate that that situation has been created and it's no, I mean, we weren't involved in that, so it's, but I understand. And I guess those are the only comments I have right now.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm gonna, I think for me, I'm not, I'm not at this time interested in having staff spend 30 days doing a report that would be speculative. There's 14 months before the election, and I'm sure there will be a lot of posturing between now and then and a lot of pros and cons and a lot of information that'll come out for and against and to make assumptions on a project that hasn't come before us yet and what that revenue may or may not be. There's adverse effects to anything and everything. You can pro and con it all night long. We could be here for days. And that's not going to change what our options are as far as whether to adopt the ordinance or to put it on the ballot. We have the best information update coming at our next council meeting. So there is literally over a year of time that's going to be providing information to the public. And I don't really know that, at this point, staff spending 30 days looking to see what we might get for property tax values or, you know, Vistra sharing with us what they think, you know, because I don't know that I wouldn't consider that to be one-sided. And it just is speculative. So much of it would just be speculative. We can, you know, if you live up here on the hillside above it, then does that affect your property values? You know, I mean, there's just so much that can feed into it, back and forth. So I'm really not interested in tasking staff at this time with another study that is just going to be, again, speculative. So that's kind of where I'm at right now. And I know we'll have this opportunity in two weeks to have this item before us as far as information sharing.
I have, with all due respect, Mayor, the joint meeting that's coming up on September 26 between Planning Commission and the Counsel, we have, at least I've been told, only 20 minutes to discuss, you know, facts that we've been given or as we know informationally. And to me, 20 minutes, I mean, this is where I'm getting-
For a presentation.
For a presentation.
Not discussion, just a presentation.
Not discussion, but presentation. And I am still feeling, even after, and I can speak to the report that I did this, you know, earlier this evening, you know, that was like eight hours between the, not even the driving, but the eight hours between the time we spent on the best site, which seems to be the main parcel in question, and I'm hearing that. And I honestly, and yes, granted, we're talking about the answers that were given by Vistra, but I was able to get in there and really push harder than we've ever had the opportunity to do. And by asking those hard questions, we got answers, answers that we had not gotten before. And so I am, I am just concerned if we don't ask for this report of staff. And I do, of course, appreciate staff's time. They've got a lot to do. Granted, we all know that. But I just keep thinking about my experience and how much it takes for me to make decisions up here, the amount of research that I do, like these people have done, that the rest of the community does not have time to do. And I just feel like the more information we can give them to guide them, I feel like that's my duty.
And you don't think that information's going to be coming forward over the next 14 months before the election?
I don't know.
Okay, you're welcome to make a motion if you'd like.
I'm still-
Okay.
I'll make one.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Let's see here. I would like to order an election on the proposed ordinance. Call for, call for an election on the ordinance by adopting Resolution Number 6123, calling for a general municipal election to be held on Tuesday, November 5, 2024, for the submission of Ordinance Number 659B to the qualified voters of the city as a proposed measure, and adopt Resolution Number 6223, setting priorities for written arguments and directing the city attorney to prepare an impartial analysis, and consider the adoption of Resolution Number 6323, providing for the filing of rebuttal arguments.
I'll second that.
Perfect.
Madam Mayor, if I could, and to the motion maker, Councilmember Barton, if that is the motion, then Counsel's requested to consider whether they want rebuttal arguments or not and also whether they want to authorize two council members to write an argument against the ballot measure because that's information that needs to be plugged into this action item. So those two items, I would suggest-
With the addition of those two.
Yeah, so Counsel would decide whether they pass the third resolution to do rebuttals or not, and also if Counsel wants to authorize an anti-ballot measure argument, you don't have to do that. The proponents get to do a pro-ballot measure argument. Counsel may pick one or two council members to write an argument. If Counsel doesn't appoint two people or one to write an argument, then members of the community are welcome to submit arguments against the ballot measure, and those would be printed. But those are decisions to be made if you're going to send it to the voters tonight. Rebuttal arguments and does Counsel want to write an anti-ballot measure argument or leave it to members of the community to submit anti-ballot measure arguments?
Wow.
Can you explain a little more about the anti-ballot?
Sure. So for ballot measures, when they go to the voters, typically you'll see an argument for and against the ballot measure. When a citizen measure is qualified, the folks that actually initially proposed it, they get to write an argument for the ballot measure. Like, that's the law. Like, their argument is what goes in the voter guide. Counsel has an option of saying, Counsel gets to write the anti-ballot measure argument. They don't have to do that. If they don't, then somebody else in the community can submit them. And there's a hierarchy in state law for when they submit them to the city clerk. Like, you might get four arguments against the ballot measure, and the city clerk has a hierarchy on which one gets printed. Like, that's a different story. But there is an option to appoint one or two council members to write the argument against it. You don't have to do that. But if you look in the Agenda Packet, you'll see that there is a section on page, what is it, 346 of the Agenda Packet, Section 2 says that one or two council members are authorized to write an argument. Now, if you don't want to do that, if nobody wants to write the argument, then we just strike Section 2 from that resolution.
But someone has to write it at some point, so then it would fall to-
Well, the members of the public have an opportunity to submit arguments. Like, sometimes no one submits arguments, and then there's no anti-argument.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, you know, there's deadlines set. But this is an option Counsel has under state law, and I just want to make sure that if Counsel does send it to the voters tonight, that we take care of these two items that need to be decided before these motions are passed.
And if Counsel did do it, would it be like an ad hoc committee that did it? Or how do you-
Counsel would appoint one or two members to write the argument, and then Counsel could decide tonight whether those folks sign it on behalf of the entire Counsel or whether they just sign it on their own. So if nobody wants to on Counsel to write an anti-argument, then you would open up that anti-ballot measure argument to members of the public, and they would have, I think, Dana could correct me, I think it's like six months to submit something.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you, Chris. I mean, Mr.-
I think that would probably be more appropriate to allow the public than us because I feel like that would create a bias considering the project is still moving through the system. So we'll go to the public for them to write a rebuttal rather than us. Are you good with that? Okay, so that would be, so that would be-
So Section 2 of Resolution-
Should not approve Section 2.
6223 would be stricken.
Perfect.
And then the other question is just straight up, do you want to approve rebuttal arguments are authorized against the main arguments? That's Resolution 6223. So again, your typical voter pamphlet will have arguments, like, you know, they're always in there. Some have rebuttals, some don't, because that's at the option of the Counsel. And so it costs a little bit more money to print the rebuttals, but some councils want the opportunity for there to be a rebuttal argument, and it's totally up to the Counsel, so.
But we're not taking a position, so I can see what we would need that.
So it gives, so the proponents get to write an argument for their ballot measure, and then they get to write a rebuttal to any argument submitted against it.
Right.
And then the people, yeah, so it's just a choice for you on whether you authorize rebuttal arguments or not. And if you want rebuttal arguments to be printed, then approve that third resolution. If you don't, then don't approve it.
So it's going to go to the public instead of us for rebuttals?
It's hard to imagine how this is all going to flow.
Well, otherwise, we have to do the rebuttal. It's either we're-
Madam Mayor, to clarify, the Counsel wouldn't do rebuttals. Like, if you don't authorize rebuttals-
Right.
Then nobody would do a rebuttal.
Okay, I mean, argument against, sorry.
Yeah.
Okay.
So you're good with striking those two things?
Yeah.
Okay. So are we clear on that?
So the motion is to approve the first two resolutions with the second resolution not authorizing Counsel to write anti-arguments.
Right.
And then the third resolution is not part of the motion because Counsel does not want to have rebuttal arguments.
Thank you.
Is that, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but is that Councilmember Barton what your motion is? Okay, all right. Thank you for your patience.
And you're good with your second on that?
Yeah.
Thank you. Can I ask for a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Barton, yes. Councilmember Edwards, yes. Councilmember Lindrum, yes. Mayor Wixson.
Yes.
Motion carries, board 01.
So looking to my staff, our staff, city team, obviously, we have run out of time. Councilmember Ford, are you still out there? Did you take a nap? City Manager Kimball, I know, City Manager Kimball, I know there was a time issue on Item C2. Are we going to be able to continue that to next meeting or how are we going to address that?
We had a quick discussion. City Attorney and Assistant City Manager decided this is a critical time, time-sensitive issue, so staff respectfully asked the City Council to discuss this item.
C2? Thank you.
Madam Mayor, would you like me to present the report now for C2?
Please, thank you.
Okay, I'll make this quick. What we have before the Counsel is a- What we have before the council is an ordinance amendment, and what it does is it amends the transient occupancy tax appeals process. It leaves the rest of the TOT ordinance in place. And what it does is, the current code provides that when there is an audit of hotels and other TOT operators in the city, if they contest the audit findings, they can appeal the findings. But the code was written in 1965, as I've said before, before the moon launch, and it provides that the first appeal goes to the city clerk, and then if they want to appeal again, they go to the city council. Modern codes have a professional hearing officer handle appeals. The short-term vacation rental ordinance, which was adopted a number of years ago, has a professional hearing officer. When the city adopted an ordinance for cannabis permits, they left the city council out of those decisions. You know, it's often considered best practices to have a professional hearing officer hear the appeals, so it amends it to do that. It adds in more due process procedures and requirements, which the 1965 code didn't have. And also, it provides for full cost recovery, which is a policy decision. Right now, for non-land use administrative decision appeals, our master fee schedule provides that the fully loaded cost is about $3,500, but council has decided previously to reduce that to about $350. So what this ordinance does is it says that the cost to appeal is full cost recovery. If council doesn't want to do that, then we can drop it down to the, you know, 10% that it is now or stay with full cost recovery. And so that is the ordinance amendment before you, professional hearing officer instead of city clerk and city council, and to do full cost recovery. If you have questions on this ordinance, available for that, been working closely with city manager and assistant city manager on bringing this ordinance amendment to you all so we can start the new appeals process for TOT audits that are currently occurring in the city.
Thank you very much. With that, I will look to council for questions of staff to my left, to my right.
I just wanted to ask about the damages, damages and, like, customer damages and pest damages and cancellations. Are we including that? One of the callers asked about that, and I'm just, I wanted to clarify what that was.
So again, the code is written in 1965, and it lawfully, but it isn't what all cities do, has a very simple definition for rent that we tax. It just simply says, rent means the consideration charged, whether or not received, for the occupancy of space in a hotel valued in money, whether it's received in money, goods, labor, or otherwise, including all receipts, cash, credits, and property and services of any kind or nature, without any deduction therefrom whatsoever. So the way this code is written in 1965 is the TOT is on the entire amount of consideration. Now, some codes in other cities have exceptions. For example, what Councilmember Landrum just mentioned. Our code doesn't have that right now. It's at council's pleasure where they want to amend this code in the future to change the definition of rent that presumably would apply prospectively, but the taxes that have already been collected are, been collected under this rent definition. It's a policy choice on whether to change that.
Thank you. And they all knew this when they were making this agreement to, for all of, I mean, this is, this was made.
The municipal code's been on the books since 1965.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Seeing none, this is a public hearing item. I will open public comment to Item C2 for those wishing to speak on the item.
Madam Mayor, Terry Simons. I've participated in these kinds of appeals in the past. Generally, it's been my experience that the initial appeal level should be favorable in the terms of the appellant, but sometimes there are additional penalties if you don't win your appeal. What I see here is an entry-level appeal cost of 300 and something, and then a full recovery cost. I'm assuming that the full recovery cost could be assessed if the appeal was not upheld, if in fact the appellant is basically trying to game the system. They know what their books will show. They know what they have done in terms of facing an audit. If they have good reason to appeal, it's because they have or should have legitimate arguments. If those arguments aren't legitimate, then they should be penalized. Otherwise, I think that the appeal process should be equitably reduced in such a way to where people that have a genuine grievance can bring it forth, and if that appeal is upheld, they shouldn't have to pay an additional penalty just to be proven right. Thank you.
Sorry, I'll make it short. Betty Winholtz, again, as someone who makes appeals, and even though it's not about that, it's about their finances, I totally agree with what Mr. Simon just said. Why would you penalize someone who's trying to get a judicious decision? And so I think you should knock that down, and I think the comment about it should only be about rent and not all this other stuff, that you can fix that. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? AGP?
Thank you, Mayor Wixson. There are currently no raised hands in the queue.
Thank you very much. With that, I will close public comment and bring it back to council. One of the options on here was modifications to the proposed amendment, correct? And Mr. Newmeyer, could you address Mr. Simon's comment?
Yes, Madam Mayor. In fact, in agreement with the principle that Mr. Simons and Ms. Winholtz have mentioned, I consider this best practices. The ordinance as presented provides that the appeal fee is refundable in its entirety if the appeal prevails in its entirety. The appeal fee is refundable in part if the appeal prevails on some of its claims on a prorated basis. So absolutely, it's already written that way.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. Comments? Questions, comments?
I think it seems reasonable. I do think that we should look at some point at changing those codes, but not tonight.
That are 60 years old?
Yeah.
I would agree, and I would ask that staff would, at a future date, look at bringing back opportunity once they can be reviewed for modifications. But I know that part of the reason that we were bringing this forward was to remove council and to remove the city clerk as the hearing officer and to use a third party, which I agree would be best practices, I think, for all of us. So I'd be looking for a motion from one of you, someone?
Well, I can't find the written part, so I don't have anything.
I've got it here. Do you want me to go?
Yes.
Okay, I know, we're all half asleep. Okay. I move that the city council introduce, is this the right part? Introduce their first reading by title only with further reading waived?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance Number 660, amending Section 3.24.100 and repealing and replacing Section 3.24.110 of Chapter 3.24 of the Moro Bay Municipal Code, updating the transient occupancy tax appeals process.
Okay, I'll second that.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Barton? Yes. Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Landrum?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
And Mayor Wixson?
Yes.
Motion carries 50.
With that, we will move Item C3 to our next meeting. And I will ask if there's any future agenda items at this time.
Sorry. Sorry, I did have one. I was wanting to see if we could have a conversation about, a discussion about the situation on Quintana Road and the homeless debris and situation with all of that, if we could have a conversation about that. And I, I don't know if he's still here, but I talked to Chief McCray earlier, and I think that's coming up, but I just wanted to make sure that we do have that in soon. So if any.
So let me, Mayor, sorry, okay? Thank you. And we can do it a couple different ways. We could, if the city council have an ad hoc committee, and then the community can appoint two council members, maybe we already have that, and then to have the discussion with staff on the homeless issues. And then, as Councilmember Landrum stated, as chiefs, the city staff are working on a couple ordinances and to bring before the city council at some point in the near future. So you could also just wait until that being brought to you formally. That's one option. Or, like I said earlier, I suggest that you can have a subcommittee and then meet with staff to discuss more details on the ordinance before being brought to the city council. The third option would be, city council can have a workshop, and we can, you know, before we introduce these things to you, we can say, this is a draft, and we'll just present it to you. This is really city council's pleasure. You do have options if you want to see the ordinance before being formally presented to you.
Do you have something scheduled coming up yet, Chief McCray, or is this still in the process?
We have a draft ordinance that we're taking to the homeless working group made up of the executive team next Monday, and then we'll be bringing a recommendation back following that.
So, pretty much, it's in the works sometime we could expect it. So are you good with that, Councilmember Landrum, if we know it's moving forward?
Yes, thank you. I, yeah.
Thank you. Perfect, that's what she was looking for. Thank you. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, staff. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.